Good morning, everyone. Good morning and thank you for braving this beautiful, cool weather to come visit City Hall this morning. Appreciate all of you. Today is Tuesday, October the 17th, 2023. This is a City Council, City of Palm Coast, Business Meeting, and we are in the community wing of Town Center, and it is now 9:00 a.m. If I could ask you all to please rise and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, you're welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I am the Pledge of Allegiance of our flag, of the United States of America, and in the Republic of America, where we stand, on the nation of God, invisible, the region of this world.
Would go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
As we move forward in the agenda this morning, we move to public participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications and Marketing Director seated in the back. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point. Avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. And I would ask that if your comment is pertinent to an agenda item, there will be public comment during each of the agenda items this morning. So hold your comment on particular agenda items till then, but I will open up the podium now for any public comment for items that are not on this morning's agenda. Is there... Yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone. A Chapter Four...
And if you would just announce your name so we have it for the record, please.
Andrew Bronco, Palm Coast, Florida. A Chapter Four Soding Code violation exists at a single-family property located in a SFR4, Single Family Residential District, per Code of ordinances, City of Palm Coast. The property is located at 33 Pope Lane. The property was sold on or about October 4th, 2023, and is currently, and beginning on or about October 8th, 2023, being leased to Oxford Houses Incorporated, a Sober Spring, Maryland-based entity who is actively leasing exclusively and specifically to female adults and female adults with children who are identified as drug and alcohol addicted. Oxford Houses Incorporated allows Oxford House to sublease the property to nine residents and bills the residents as a self-run, self-supported addiction recovery houses. Each resident pays individual rent money to Oxford House Incorporated. A SFR4, Single Family Residential District property, is permitted on occupancy number of one to six people per code. Seven to 14 people residing in a SFR4, Single Family Residential District is not permitted per Code of ordinances, City of Palm Coast. According to the findings of City Attorney Nevin Zimmerman, the Oxford Houses are, quote, "unstaffed, unsupervised, and unregulated," except for those who live there. An immediate cease and desist order is warranted and necessary to preserve the integrity of the Palm Coast Code of ordinances and all legal liabilities brought to bear upon all entities responsible for the adherence and enforcement of the Code of ordinances should harm from enforcement failure be set upon any adult resident or any children residing at the aforementioned 33 Pope Lane property. I urge this council to act without delay. Sheriff Staley has been advised on this issue. Yourself, sir, Mr. Mayor, has been advised on this issue, as has the City Manager via email. And I also represent the P Section Neighborhood Group that consists of 2,300 members, and they have done us by it as well.
Good. We thank you for your comment.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Is there another speaker that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, sir.
Greetings, Mayor, Member of Councils, Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. So last City Council meeting, I brought up some issues that I thought were some of the expenditures at the waterfront park rebuild, the new project in waterfront park. One of the questions that I asked was about the day rate use, and the gentleman who's in Head of Parks and Rec back there said that they're looking in for ways to find day rate uses for the parks. Just wanted to introduce you guys to something. This is called a game camera. It's used in hunting. Costs $40 to $120, depending upon what you get. You can lift a little screw on the bottom that you can screw into wood, or you can wrap it around the tree. You can set it to take video pictures every three, five, 10 seconds. They even make new ones that have little antennas now that come where they can send the pictures to your cellphone. So if you guys wanted to, there's 14 parks in the City of Palm Coast. If you put two at each park for roughly $2,800, you can have a day count rate of every single person that comes through these parks without having to put a single employee up there to count. Now, I would also like to refute a point that Mr. Danko made to the council after I made my public comment. I said that I thought that the money was spent irresponsibly. He then made a statement saying, basically, you know, like, "This is Parks and Rec impact money. We have to use it in Parks and Rec impact." I found that irony because I was actually at the grand opening of the waterfront park project when you spoke, and you made the statement yourself, Mayor, that it was a lovely addition to the community, in addition to our shining star of a park, the Children's Memorial Park. I have to disagree. That park over there is not a shining star of our community, but it should be. The day rate use of that, unfortunately, it's a sad statement that people visit that park because of the circumstances, but there is a heavy day rate use there. There are at least six, seven, eight benches in that stretch that are literally in half. I mean, like, in half. There's one that's missing planks, rusted out, that people sit on. There's all these issues. So, yeah, it was Parks and Rec impact money, but when the residents of this town say that they want to focus on the current parks that we have, it means maintaining the current parks that we have, not clearing land and building whole new structures. We have issues that need to be addressed, and there's places that this money can go. And quite frankly, I've spoken to lots of people in the Parks and Rec Department. They're aware of it. The uppers have apparently done nothing, so I'm just questioning where the management of the money is going. With that being said, I'd like to thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Good morning, all. Joe Runak, Seven Courtney Court. I'd like to again speak about the application for the cellphone tower at Seven Clubhouse Drive and why it's inappropriate. That area is highly densely populated with houses and people. These towers, no one knows for sure. I don't know if it's super safe or whether it emits enough microwaves and radiations that there could be problems. These towers are permanent. They go up. They're never coming down. 365 days a year. You're gonna look at this. The application has been now for years, two years since we got the letter residents in the area. This produces a lot of anxiety, a lot of anguish. There's nothing remotely the height of this tower. Palm trees and oak trees, part of our hammock, which the city is known for, are approximately 70 feet tall. This tower will be 15 stories tall, 150 feet. Towering is the right word, over everything. Again, my house, I believe I'm ground zero. I'm 300 feet away from this. I can't imagine someone walking into my house if I decide to sell it, and looking at that in my backyard, your eyes go directly to it. That has to affect the value of not only my house, but all the houses in the area. The area is inappropriate because there are businesses, there is a retirement home, it's a bus stop. In other words, very bustling, people around that tower all day long. Initially, it was tried to put this tower up on the other side of the golf course, and I frankly hate to say this, but I feel it's very mean-spirited to pick another location one foot off the property of the golf course. I live on a 15T there. Have other areas, other sites. Where is the research for this? Where is the idea that there has to be a more appropriate site? I understand, according to the last meeting with Diamond regarding lack of coverage. I do understand that, but again, in my opinion, there has to be a better spot than this area for that tower. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Celia Buglisi. I live here since 1991, and unfortunately, I am described with the ones that come and speak here as the usual ones. It's not that. We represent thousands of people. I am here to support Mr. Joe Runak. We live on the Homeowners Association across the street from this tower. The tower will be 150 feet from the first homeowner's entrance that we have, and this tower is being planned, and you need an special exemption, which the city should not give, neither the planning board, an special exemption to the original residential zone, because the city is approving this tower on a PSP lot. A parcel service, public parcel service, is not supposed to have anything on it by law that is for profit. This tower will be for profit, so the city is trying to violate the PSP lots. That is a PSP lot, and of course, it's not sufficiently big for a tower of 150 feet tall, so I'm supporting Mr. Joe Runak. Also, I want to tell this council that I just received through my question on the "When are we gonna get now?" because the Wawa that City Development Official decided to bring to Florida Park Drive that will add 100 cars per day, no, 200 cars per hour to the current 9,000 on Florida Park Drive, that, for that, I ask, "When are we gonna get the two calming, traffic calming islands for which we spend $163,000 in design and traffic study?" And Mr. Grunwald, engineering, told me that is not in the 10-year plan, those funds. Okay, might not be in the 10-year plan, Mr. Alvin, but I'm asking you and this council that if Community Development lobby to bring a Wawa to Florida Park Drive to the 9,000 current traffic, then they need to find the money, which were $392,000, because for the two calming traffic islands on Florida Park Drive, we need them. We have 9,000 cars, and we will have 200 more cars per hour with a Wawa when it will open there. So I'm asking you, please do the right thing, because I won't stop asking for this. And I represent all the residents on that 1.2, 2.2 miles that we have in Florida Park Drive. I asked for a garbage can four years ago, and Mr. Carcote promised it and has not been stopped. Florida Park Drive doesn't even have one liter can in the two miles, so this is very unfair. So I'm asking you, please, also, do not increase our fees to the golfers on Florida, on the Palm Harbor Golf Course, because we don't want to lose them. Please. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please, yes.
Good morning. Jeffrey Seib. I would like to address the state of information flow from the city to the residents. In our political system, especially at the local level, our level, the need to ensure that residents, voters, everybody has a handle on what's happening in our city is extremely important. The only way to achieve that is for there to be a trusting relationship between the people and government. The best way to accomplish this is for the government to keep everybody informed on what's going on. In our city, it's mostly the buildings and development projects that generate the most controversy. It's incumbent on those responsible to provide in-depth information on these projects as soon as possible, not wait until the last minute possible. All the plans, initial application letters, maps, future land use map designations, architects' rendering, lawyers' correspondence, consulting firm reports, and city building and planning reviews, all of it has to be made available at the earliest date. The city has a map of Palm Coast on the website that the public can go to with development projects denoted with little symbols. Clicking on a symbol of a project location provides little useful information, and other than the name of the developer, none of the information that I just mentioned, plans, reviews, maps, et cetera. The city would avoid some of the public's confusion and distrust over the developments by providing a more in-depth presentation of all the information related to the project as soon as possible on the city's website. At the time of the first planning board meeting for the project in question, all the information should be at the public's disposal. This would be a big first step to help residents and ensure confidence in the manner in which these development decisions are made. If I am wrong about any of these situations, the point is not wrong. We need more information. I hope you will take this under advisement.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address City Council at this time on an item not in the forward agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Janice Reed, Palm Coast. I would like to address the thousands of dollars being spent each year to advertise Palm Harbor Golf Course. City and council staff like to refer to Palm Harbor Golf Course as a city amenity in order to justify the taxpayer money being used to subsidize its operations every year. But the golf course is being advertised on local radio as a business in direct competition with the privately-owned golf courses in Palm Coast. In fact, there's no mention in the ad that the golf club is owned or operated by the city. Listening to the ad, one would think it was just another Florida golf course struggling to make ends meet, not the bottomless money pit it's been to the citizens of this city. The city spends no money to advertise its other amenities. I have not heard one radio spot encouraging me to use the Frida Zamba Pool or the Tennis Center, neither of which have any private competition, only the golf course. Council has stated on other issues that they don't think the city should get involved in activities that directly compete with private enterprise. Yet we continue to pour money into a golf course, advertise the golf course, and operate a golf course that directly and visibly competes with other businesses in Palm Coast. I read in last week's Palm Coast Observer that Mayor Alvin thinks if the city raises the Palm Harbor golf fees to what he calls "market rate," then, quote, "Some golfers might go to other clubs." It's incredulous that our city leaders really think that the right way to run the only city business that competes with private enterprise is to undercut those other businesses. Private golf courses pay property taxes, tangible personal property taxes, sales taxes on equipment and materials, stormwater fees, garbage fees, and other expenses that the city golf course does not pay. Yet the city course continues to lose money every year because you refuse to charge golfers a reasonable market rate. We don't get that option. We can't pay our bills with taxpayer dollars. So it's time to take a hard look at the real operational costs versus the rates you charge in light of your own policy not to compete with private business. Stop your paid advertising and give us a chance to compete on an even playing field. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any others... Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilors. My name's Richard Hamilton. I'm a resident not of Palm Coast, but of Flagler County, but I do have a strong interest in what goes on here. I came today to listen to the Park's presentation and to hear your thoughts on it. But there is an item on the consent agenda that I wanted to offer a few comments on. Is this the appropriate time? Because I don't know if you're gonna put it off the consent agenda or just let it through.
I would prefer if you would hold for the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers that would like to address City Council at this time? If not, I will close public comment. Any comment from the dais right now?
I do have a comment. Over the weekend, I received calls from the owners of both Cypress Knolls Golf Course and Pine Lakes, and we discussed a lot of their expenses and increases in insurance, chemicals, and all that sort of thing, but the main thing we discussed, though, is we are, as a city, competing against these golf courses. And I think it's great we have a golf course. We have a magnificent golf course. A lot of municipal or county golf courses throughout the country are normally what's called a poor man's course. They're not as pristine, as beautiful as our course is, and so they charge lower amounts for people to play. And that way, they're not really competing against the nicer courses, the private businesses, but we are. And I think as we, just want to pass this along, as we look down the road on how we're gonna set our new pricing, I really think we need to not be undercutting our local businesses, because if you can imagine, we've seen this in Metansas, imagine Pine Lakes, the W section or the E section, losing their golf courses, what that would do to property values in that area. It would be actually hurting ourselves if that ever happened. And so I just want council members to talk to the owners of these private businesses and get their side of this before we make a decision, because I just don't want us to undercut our local businesses.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pontieri?
Just really quickly, I do agree with much of what you've said as far as us, as a city subsidizing people's playing golf. We discussed this last week, kind of finding that balance of providing an affordable alternative for some of our retirement community to play golf, but also ensuring we're not undercutting private business. And I think that this has been pulled from our fee ordinance that we are looking at today so that we can look more into this. I just wanted to make a general comment. Last, I had a conversation with City Manager yesterday about a lot of the public comment we've received over the past few weeks, and I wanted to reach out to individuals about a lot of their concerns, but nobody filled out a comment card. So a lot of our residents come here, they come and take their three minutes at the podium, and then they don't fill out a comment card, and it makes it really, really hard for us to reach out to you and to get more information, because three minutes is not a lot of time. And we really do care about the things that you all bring to us, so please, please, please fill out comment cards when you come here and make public comment, because that gives us the ability to actually reach out to you, get more information than that three minutes allows, and it helps to better resolve things in our community. So please, please, please take advantage of the comment cards.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else?
I would agree with most of what was said, and I think it's potential that we've become a victim of our own success, because we've transformed that golf course into something that is truly magnificent and really adds value to that area. I think the comments regarding making sure that we're not impacting local businesses are very pertinent, and we should definitely be considering that under advisement. My one rebuttal would be, you know, are these golf courses also working with one another to provide this type of pricing, et cetera, et cetera? That's probably the wrong term, but I want to make it very clear that our staff has done such a tremendous job transforming this golf course to something that was coming from a state of disrepair and being shut down to now being one of the best municipal golf courses in northeast Florida, and I frequent there, and it's a beautiful amenity, and we have so many residents that take pride in, you know, our municipal golf courses. So I think, with that being said, we may have become a victim of our own success here, but I just wanted, again, to extend, you know, my thanks and all the acknowledgements to our staff who have turned that facility around, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. With that, we'll move to next item on the agenda this morning, which is minutes. I'm asking for a motion to approve the minutes from...
I'll make the motion.
From the business meeting of October 3rd, 2023, I have a motion from the Vice Mayor. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Additionally, the workshop meeting of October the 10th, 2023, may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
And finally, the special workshop meeting held on October the 10th, 2023, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to approve from Vice Mayor Danko. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Hyder. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move right to our proclamations this morning, and our first proclamation will be delivered by Councilman Clufus, October 2023, as Disability Employment Awareness Month. Councilman, it's yours.
Pardon my back. Do we have anyone who would like to be present while we're participating? Everybody? Everybody come on up? I think so, right? We're gonna bring the whole crew up?
Yeah.
Takes an army. We got plenty of room up here. Come on down. Got a whole crew, perfect. Would you like to stand on this side of it? You want to come stand on this side? Yeah, totally. You guys want to come on this side? Thank you all for being here today. The participation is incredible, and I appreciate you guys being here for this proclamation this morning. Pardon my back. Whereas in 1988, Congress declared the month of October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month to recognize the contributions made by individuals with disabilities, and whereas a diverse workforce creates the opportunity for growth and help towards building a better, stronger economy for our city, and whereas our residents with disabilities deserve the right to live independently, enjoy self-determination, and be treated equally in the workplace. Whereas the Able Trust, also known as the Florida Endowment Foundation for Vocational Rehabilitation, has worked with employers and community organizations throughout the state, including the Flagler County School District, to enable thousands of Florida citizens with disabilities to enter the workforce. And whereas Florida's Division of Vocational Rehabilitation and Division of Blind Services within the Department of Education assist people with disabilities so they may become employed. And whereas Flagler Schools has seen an overwhelming impact on the lives of many Florida citizens with disabilities by offering services including job placement assistance, training, support services, and job coaching. And whereas the City of Palm Coast joins the rest of Florida in recognizing the contributions of the 2.8 million Floridians with disabilities by celebrating October 2023. of the 2.8 million Floridians with disabilities by celebrating October 2023 as Disability Employment Awareness Month. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that October 2023 be officially designated as Disability Employment Awareness Month and call on all citizens for Palm Coast to celebrate the many contributions individuals with disabilities make to Florida, to our nation, and to the world. Signed this day, 17th of October, 2023, Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and Mayor David Alphen. And if I may ask, we just hold our applause. I think that would probably be for the best, correct? So let's give them some silent cheers, guys. Everybody give us some silent cheers? Yeah. Excellent. Would you like to say a few words? Hey, absolutely. Fist bump first. Awesome. Absolutely. Here, feel free.
Thank you, guys, for including us here. We are so happy to be included in this community. I just want to thank our city leaders and business owners to always think about us and open their doors. Keep it coming, guys, because I have a great group of students who are ready to work. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Awesome. Photo? You want to stand in the middle? We got the proclamation. Absolutely. This is all yours. Yeah, no, for sure.
Councilwoman Pontieri will deliver our next proclamation this morning, which is Adopt a Dog Month.
I am very happy to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas the founder of the first animal shelter in the United States, Mrs. Caroline Earl White, established the Women's Humane Society in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania in 1869 to advocate for the humane treatment of carriage horses and eventually for dogs and other small animals. And whereas today there are approximately 5,000 community animal shelters nationwide, along with 10,000 animal rescues and sanctuaries, giving so many dogs the hope for being adopted into loving new homes and tender environments. And whereas shelters are one of the single, are the one single hope where an estimated four million unwanted, misunderstood, and neglected dogs who need only one fresh start can meet a compassionate human friend. And whereas the need continues to grow for people willing to provide either permanent or foster care or safe, loving homes for sheltered dogs. And whereas owning a sheltered dog supports so many benefits, including increasing a person's physical activity and socialization, managing stress levels, costing less money for adoption fees, promoting laughter and smiles, helping to lower blood pressure, and protecting from heart disease. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that October 2023 be officially designated as Adopt a Dog Month. And remind all residents that sheltered dogs aren't broken. They've simply experienced more life than other dogs, so be proud to have their greatness by your side. Signed the 17th day of October, 2023, by our clerk Kaylee Cook and Mayor of Palm Coast, David Alphen.
Thank you so much to the city staff for making this happen and to the city leaders. We brought a lot of our dog walkers here today and our vice president and our volunteer coordinator. So we thank you so much for the support. We're super proud to be the shelter that serves Palm Coast and Flagler County. And there's a dog for everybody. Come, come to the shelter. Come get a dog.
While we get set up for the picture, we're also going to show a quick video.
The shelter was founded in 1980, and then the first building was built in 1982. We built the building that we're in now in 2004. But the original motivation for building a shelter was obviously there was a need as Flagler County was beginning to grow, and there was no place safe to take animals. A lot of our volunteers are Palm Coasters, and they are priceless. Like, we just, we couldn't survive without volunteers. So always looking for more volunteers, and there's a wide range of what people can do to help us. I really do think shelter animals somehow, they kind of just know that this is, you know, they're, they're getting an extra chance. And some of them have been through hell. We don't know the backgrounds of a lot of these animals, and some of the ones we do know the backgrounds on, we know the backgrounds aren't good. And I think shelter animals really appreciate a new, you know, getting a new life. We invite everybody to come see us. We're here seven days a week, and we, it, there's still people that are afraid to come to the Humane Society because they're afraid it's sad. And I promise, it's not sad. Especially the more you come, the more you see that the animals do have a pretty good life here. It's still not home. We want everybody to go to a home. But in the meantime, while they're with us, they get lots of love and care. And the more volunteers, the more visitors we have, the more they get. But just come see us and see if you fall in love.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
Councilwoman Pontieri will deliver our next proclamation as well, which is Celebrate Babies Week. I can't think of anything better than puppies and babies.
Yes, puppies and babies. I'm not allowed to go to the animal shelter because I'll take every animal home. My husband has cut me off. So just before I get this proclamation, I have to share this. I was with family over the weekend reading the city council packet and preparing for this morning's meeting. And my 21-month-old cousin decided to practice her shapes on the Celebrate Babies Week. And she even signed on Mayor Alphen's signature line. So we might have a future mayor in our, in our raising, in our family. So with that, whereas infants and young children thrive within nurturing environments and stable relationships that meet their development needs. And those who care for infants and young children are often in vulnerable states and require support and resources to help them care for their young children. And whereas Florida is committed to the belief that early relationships are the foundation for a young child's psychological, emotional, developmental, and physical well-being. Each infant and young child must be nurtured and protected by one or more consistent, safe, loving caregivers. And whereas in the third week of October, the Florida Association of Infant Mental Health, FAIMH, and the Northeast Central Florida Chapter bring awareness to infant mental health and encourage the community to honor and celebrate our babies and those who work with and on behalf of young children in our communities. And whereas the FAIMH Northeast Central Florida Chapter is comprised of partners from the broad Northeast Central Florida County system of care who work with infants and families come together regularly to collaborate on how the city of Palm Coast can support the early mental health of infants and their families within the county through education, training, professional development, infants and their families, I'm sorry, reflective consultation, and community resources. We acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness and public understanding of the critical importance of healthy relationships between infants, toddlers, parents, and early childhood system of care. And whereas the data shows that the need to support positive outcomes for all children through systems that ensure access to services and programs that support all infants, toddlers, young children, and their families. And whereas there are several policy initiatives in Florida committed to improving outcomes for infants, toddlers, and young children with a focus on collaboration and partnership. And whereas through intentional community outreach, professional development, networking, fundraising, social action, and policy awareness efforts, babies, their families, and those who personally and professionally support them are honored and celebrated. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of October 15th, 2023 be officially designated as Celebrate Babies Week. And the city of Palm Coast and urge all Palm Coast residents and businesses to recognize and commend the Florida Association of Infant Mental Health, Northeast Central Florida Chapter, for providing the time and space for the community to contribute to improving the lives of our local infants and their families. Signed the 17th day of October, 2023, by our clerk Kaylee Cook and Mayor of Palm Coast, David Alphen. Thank you.
I want to thank the city for providing the proclamation. And I think that as we see increasingly, we've become a community of young children. And to be sure that we have all the necessary supports in the community for our children and to support the families, and we have worked in families that also need support to raise children successfully. And that's kind of what we want to do right now, just make sure that we're all kind of conscious of it. Thank you.
Our next proclamation will be delivered by Councilwoman Hyder, and this would be Mobility Week.
Good morning, everyone. Are there any representatives here? I'm honored to be able to give this proclamation. I am actually the liaison for the Flagler County Transportation Board, so I'm honored to present this proclamation. Thank you. Whereas Mobility Week is a cooperative effort by the Florida Department of Transportation and its partner agencies to promote awareness of safe, multimodal transportation choices by hosting an annual collection of outreach events. And whereas Mobility Week is an ideal time for counties, cities, and transportation agencies to highlight achievements, introduce new initiatives, and/or implement new policies promoting sustainable transportation. And whereas Mobility Week is an important opportunity for individuals to explore various transportation choices available and consider how multimodal transportation reduces traffic, congestion, benefits the environment, and improves community health. And whereas Mobility Week is consistent with the city of Palm Coast's key priorities of ensuring a safe community for our citizens and visitors, and merging our residential and commercial properties with our city of parks and trails, image to create sustainable framework of visual appeal while caring for our land, water, air, and wildlife. And whereas the city of Palm Coast supports Mobility Week by hosting, participating in events such as Kickoff Walk, Mobility Week, Talk and Ride, and Our Neck of the Woods with the Palm Coast Fire Department. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of October 27th, 2023, be officially designated as Mobility Week. Signed the 17th day of October, 2023, attest Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and Mayor David Alphen, City of Palm Coast, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. So in light of that proclamation and in celebration of Mobility Week, the city of Palm Coast has partnered with the Florida Department of Transportation, also our transportation planning organization, River to Sea, we've Flagler County Sheriff's Office to produce a really good event for our children and families coming up. That'll be on November 3rd from 5:00 to 7:00. That's a Friday. We have 250 bike helmets. We have 250 bike lights just to give away. We have contacted every local business in Palm Coast that deals with bicycles, and they're coming out. We've also contacted our sister cities in Bonnell and Flagler Beach, and they'll be out there as well. So come, learn, and get some safety tips for our children. We also, surprisingly, I'm very excited for this, you can fix your bike, too. So please, if you have a flat tire or there's some gear shifts, no electric bikes can be fixed there. But if you do have a bike that needs fixed, we're, we have people on site that are willing to do that. And food trucks. So it'll be a really fun time.
So I have the, the pleasure of offering the last two proclamations for this morning. The first proclamation is that October 2023 is Temple Beth Shalom 50th Anniversary Celebration Day. So if members, please come up. I, I struggled with an introduction. So I, like many, am lost in the moment of human conflict. But certainly, I wish everyone safety and well-being. Everyone that's in harm's way. So with that, let me begin the proclamation. Judaism, whereas Judaism is the world's oldest monotheistic religion dating back 4,000 years with teachings that span a rich history of law, culture, and tradition. And whereas the abounding studies of the Jewish religion began to traverse the city of Palm Coast, Florida, when 18 Jewish families moved to this city in 1973, bringing with them the dedicated values, inspiration, and a desire to uphold their religion in their new community. And whereas with the completion of the construction of their temple in the woods at 40 Wellington Drive in 1980, a brand-new, innovative Jewish congregation came together for an inaugural service and celebration of the new Temple Beth Shalom, meaning House of Peace, signifying the official inauguration of a Jewish Palm Coast community. And whereas for one half-century, Temple Beth Shalom has succeeded in sustaining Jewish traditions in Palm Coast, serving as a welcoming, loving, gathering place for prayer, education, sharing, and caring. Whereas Temple Beth Shalom has been a bastion of support and community partnership in Palm Coast, subsidizing food drives and food banks, raising funds for student needs, and championing local pet adoptions and animal service organizations, exhibiting the congregation's responsive service for all walks of life in our city. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that October the 27th, 2023, be officially designated as Temple Beth Shalom 50th Anniversary Celebration Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council. But most especially, thank you to our fellow citizens. But most especially, thank you to our fellow citizens. We have found and built a home here 50 years ago. We love it so much. We're grateful for the participation you've allowed us in your lives and the participation we've been able to give within our county as well. So we hope that the next 50 years brings us closer together, expands our friendship and our goals. We know that we have found our home here, and we are so grateful to be in your company. Thank you so very much.
That was our rabbi.
Our final proclamation this morning is also near and dear to my heart. And if I could have you please join me, all of those that are representing Founder's Day. And while they're coming up, I will steal a quote from our city manager, who likes to refer to us as "a young city with old bones." Well, this is part of the group that's protecting those older bones and hopefully mine as well. So with that, I'll say, whereas the City of Palm Coast Historical Society Museum stands as a testament to the rich history and heritage of our community, preserving and showcasing the stories, artifacts, and memories of the people who have shaped our city. And whereas Founder's Day on October 28th marks a momentous occasion to celebrate the dedication and tireless efforts of the individuals who founded our community and laid the foundation of our city's growth and prosperity. And whereas this special day serves as an opportunity to bring together residents and visitors to appreciate the unique history, culture, and traditions that make Palm Coast a remarkable place to live and visit. And whereas Founder's Day provides a time for reflection, education, and appreciation of the invaluable contributions made by our forebearers who built Palm Coast into the vibrant and welcoming city it is today. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that October 28th, 2023, be officially designated as Founder's Day. Congratulations.
Thank you so much to the mayor and city council and the citizens of Palm Coast. I'd like to emphasize that your Historical Society is an umbrella organization, and we try to recognize and preserve the history of all different sorts of groups that have made an impact here in Palm Coast. It's particularly relevant that representatives of Temple Beth Shalom should be here today because several months ago, Professor Alex Mahler approached me and asked for a letter of support recognizing their 50th anniversary celebration. And I said, well, it's too bad that it falls on the same weekend as Founder's Day because we're having a big celebration in Holland Park, and many of you may not be able to attend because you're having your own celebration. But what was significant about this 50th anniversary milestone is that the congregation gathered in Palm Coast's original yacht club, which opened in December of 1972. And at that time, it was the only structure where residents could gather for anniversary celebrations, for religious gatherings, for civic association meetings. So the Jewish community shared that space with the Catholic congregation and the Lutheran congregation and every other group that wanted to observe religious services. We are having a Founder's Day celebration in Holland Park on October 28th in order to bring the community together in the space where our museum is located. Unbeknownst to many people, it is the 10th anniversary of that museum opening. And I'll bet many of you in this room did not know that it's there. And part of the reason why you may not have visited is because we're only open Wednesdays and Saturdays from 1:00 to 3:00 due to the lack of volunteer docents. But on Saturday, October 28th, we're going to be open from 11:00 to 2:00. And in order to encourage more people of all ages to come and enjoy what we have, we've encouraged, we've invited five food truck vendors to come. So those hungry for knowledge and those hungry for food will be able to come and enjoy the music by DJ Vern and tour some of the 20 different community groups, which will have pop-up tents in the outfield to exhibit their history in Palm Coast and the ongoing work that they do. Included among them is the Garden Club, which is one of our oldest clubs, and the Flagler Humane Society, which you saw celebrated earlier. So I encourage you to please set aside October 28th from 11:00 to 2:00 to come out and celebrate Palm Coast history. Thank you.
And I would just add briefly that I received a call yesterday from our Senator Rick Scott, who was calling, of course, to make sure that we were out of harm's way with the recent storms. But he already knew all of that information. What he was really calling about was asking, how are we doing? How is our community? He wanted us to know that we have his eye, and he's keeping a careful watch over us, and he offered to help us in any way we need going forward. So I think that's very appropriate, from Founder's Day to the point where we have our U.S. Senator keeping a careful watch on us personally. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Okay? Very good.
Thank you. Good news. All right, one more video while we get set for our picture.
Everywhere I've lived, I've always been interested in learning the history of how that community was founded. When I came to Palm Coast, I felt the same way. And luckily, I met Art Dyke, who lives in my community, and he's written the book, Images of America: Palm Coast. I purchased the book. I learned that they needed help with membership, and the rest is history. If there's something that I can do to help preserve history and promote it, then as a retiree, I'll do that because I think it's important. And otherwise, it's a disservice to those who came before us not to at least acknowledge what they did for our benefit.
Palm Coast was actually a development first before it was a city. So it's kind of unique. There was an article years ago, "Can a Corporation Build a Better City?" And the answer was yes, and we think so. So many people locally have a, a long history with Palm Coast, and even those with a shorter history, it's such a positive experience. And we would love to show them around, show them our facility, and hopefully, they would want to get involved.
I have to believe that if learning the history of that place enriches my life and my appreciation to the way a community is today, I have to believe that I'm not the only one. I think for many people, including myself, there's an emotional connection to be had by seeing actual memorabilia from a different era, which is what we typically feature here.
I think it is important to come and, and hands-on, see what's happened here. Because when you go online, you get a picture of one timeframe or one situation with the fires or the opening of a building. But when you come here, you see the entire picture. My children grew up here. It's a great place to retire, someday I hope to. And it's just been a great experience.
We hope that you'll make time in your schedule to come and visit and maybe appreciate in a deeper way just what is so historic about Palm Coast.
We'll now move forward on the agenda to Section G, which is our ordinances of the first read. And Councilor, if you would read in number nine, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. We have a presentation for Parks Master Plan Draft Report. So I apologize to both of you, so please proceed.
No worries. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am Brittany McDermott, the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, joined here by Mr. Art Thatcher, who is our project manager with Barry Dunn on our Parks Master Plan. He'll be taking you through the draft plan and some action items.
Thank you, Brittany. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Art Thatcher with Barry Dunn. I'm here today to, to kind of get through the, the draft of the master plan and to give you a little bit of information that we've already covered several times, and then kind of talk about some of the priorities for the plan. So just to kind of highlight where we are, we're in this draft master planning process, that fourth stage of, of the master plan. Once we've gotten review from, from the city and from the county, we will, we'll finalize the plan and present that to, to staff. So as you'll recall, we, we've done a lot of public engagement through this process. We, we held focus groups, stakeholder meetings, leadership interviews, public meetings, talked with staff, and to begin to develop our, our needs for the, for the community. One of the things that came out of that, that we asked about were priorities over the next five years. And so some of those top priorities are conserving, conservation and wildlife protection, funding, staffing, new facilities, and diversity of your park components. We also did a, a survey. We did a statistically valid mailed sample survey that went out to 4,500 residents. We got a little bit better than a 10% return, which is what we were looking for, 471 surveys returned. We also took that same survey, put it on the city's website and the county's website, and provided it as an open link, and got another 1,085 responses back from the survey. Some of the highlights from the survey, we asked about most frequently used facilities and beaches, parks, trails, pathways are your most frequently used facilities. And about a quarter of the respondents use them at least once a week. We also asked about amenities that they use when they visit your parks or your recreation facilities. And those top five amenities are your nature walking, walking trails, your restrooms, the boardwalk overlooks and piers, your trails in general, and then those ocean-based recreation, surfing, fishing, kayaking. We also asked about areas for greatest improvement. And kind of those top four responses were parks and open space, walking trails and, and walking, walkways and trails, nature preserves and reserves, and then amenities within the parks. We also asked about what would increase their usage. And so those top five things were improved communication, additional lighting, additional facilities and amenities, more shade, and better condition and maintenance. And finally, we asked about priorities for the next five years. And so those top five priorities were improving your existing facilities and amenities, additional trails and pathways, nature-based recreation, more senior programs, and, and more parks. So if you'll remember, we also did an inventory and a level of service analysis. So we went out and went to all of your parks, did an inventory of the, of the parks, the components within those parks, we GIS them, and then we did some evaluation, looking at current level of service based in equity, distribution, access, and gaps. And so we were able to develop our recommendations based on, evidence-based, and prioritize those, those recommendations. So one of the things that, that we also did is, as you'll remember, we scored each one of those components on a scale of one to three. And so we were able to pull out all of those ones and, and look at, identify the park, identify the component, and then what our observations were as far as that's concerned. And I'll go into a little bit more detail towards the end of the presentation. So the other thing that we looked at is that distribution is, you know, how are the, the parks distributed in relationship to current population and, and the service area? And so one of the things that, you know, that, that the National Recreation and Parks Association looks at is a 10-minute walk to a recreation facility. We know in municipalities that that can become realistic, but as we look at the county as a whole, that is really not as realistic. So one of the things that we looked at is we, we established this three-mile distance to a recreation component as that access level. And so as you can see, in the, in the City of Palm Coast, 95% of your residents are within that three-mile access to a, to a recreation component. And within the county, 88% of the population is within that three-mile radius. And so very good coverage and access to recreation components. As you remember, we also did a trails assessment. Miller Leg was here, and they went out and looked at your trails, looked at the, your trailheads, and provided us with some, with some recommendations and some overall, you know, establishments. So you've got about 125 miles of trails. You offer really a wide variety. Many of the trails are interconnected. You've got amenities at your trailheads, restrooms, seating areas, bike maintenance stations, and many of them are within your, your natural habitat. So from that, from all of the data that we gathered, one of the things, we, we looked at developing goals and, and objectives. And so we developed four goals through that. And so the first goal is investing in your current infrastructure and addressing your aging facilities. The second was improving and enhancing programming and outreach. The third was improving organizational operations, and the fourth was increasing financial opportunities. So we developed objectives to, to address each of those that I went over the last time that we were here. And we began to develop action steps. And we look at a priority timeframe of short-term, up to three years, that midterm, four to six, and then long-term, seven to 10. And then some of those, especially around organization, are ongoing as it relates to, as it relates to your policies and procedures and those things. And so as you remember, we developed 14 objectives under the first goal and briefly kind of touched on those, maintaining your existing facilities, renovating and replacing outdated facilities, expanding your, your open space in parks, exploring opportunities to add trails, developing additional outdoor recreation facilities, providing improved signage, and exploring opportunities for non-traditional sports and activities. Also, developing new amenities at your existing parks, adding new indoor space, upgrading your comfort, convenience, and customer service amenities, creating park identities, addressing current and future needs for athletic fields, gathering feedback and data on your facility usage, and then monitoring your ADA access to parks, trails, beaches, and facilities. Our second goal was improving and enhancing programming and outreach. We had eight, eight objectives under that, improving your department marketing and communication, utilizing technology, exploring opportunities for non-traditional recreation, continuing to grow programs and services accessible to citizens of all abilities, continuing to address recreation programming, enhancing your special events programming, partnering with other service providers, and then gathering feedback and data on program participation. Our third goal, improving your organizational operations, staffing appropriately to meet Our third goal, improving your organizational operations, staffing appropriately to meet your current demand and maintaining your established quality of service, reexamining your departmental policies, procedures, and processes, reviewing current operation agreements with other service providers to make sure that both are benefiting. And then our last goal was to increase financial opportunities, and so, again, exploring additional funding opportunities through grants, philanthropic opportunities, and then exploring, developing, and implementing a cost recovery and pricing philosophy and practice. So from there, we developed action steps, and in the draft plan, we have action steps with each one of those objectives. What we did was, working with staff, working with the project team, we came up with kind of the top 10, and you'll see the majority of those are in the facilities and amenities, and then there are individual from each of the others. And so as we look at those, you know, those actions are addressing low-scoring components and amenities from the GRASP Atlas, so looking at those ones that were identified through our inventory and level of service analysis, developing a staffing plan as recommended in the maintenance analysis. We did a very thorough analysis of your maintenance, both from the city side as well as the county side. Maintenance projects and annual maintenance needs being addressed through funding on a regular schedule. Many, most of that is done through your capital budget, and so, you know, continuing to maintain that. Developing park-specific master plans, so as you're renovating your parks and updating your parks, some of those may need a complete kind of master planning process to get custom, excuse me, get citizen input on what the needs are within those individual parks. Working with developers to include park land as the community continues to grow, continuing to work with the city of Palm Coast and the other municipalities to develop and expand your bicycle paths and your walking trails, and that's really the lead organization of that would be the county. Developing non-traditional sports and outdoor adventure amenities, and then the opportunity to, as opportunities arise and facilities become available, to develop and implement additional programs for people with special and unique needs. And then as parks, beaches, trails, and facilities are upgraded, and the master plan is implemented, ensuring that your staffing levels are being maintained to meet your current performance standards. And then additional funding opportunities should be explored through land and water conservation funds, as well as transportation funds that are available through the federal and state government. And so, as I mentioned earlier, and we had identified some of those low-scoring components, and we had Miller Legg go through and look at some capital costing for some of those recommendations, and we have, in the document itself, have some additional detail with these. You can see some of these that came out. You're currently doing repairs for the splash pad with Indian Trail, with the sports complex, and looking at upgrading your playground, as well as upgrading the diamond fields there with the James Holland Memorial Park, adding a concession stand, there's not a concession stand there, so upgrading that concession and increasing those comfort and convenience for the visitors and users. At the community center and park, making upgrades to the trailhead, providing access to the walkway, restrooms, drinking fountains, showers, and added signage. And then at the Ralph Carter Park, kind of looking at that historic feature, upgrading and making some field renovations, as well as including some historical signage for those. Those were some of those low-scoring components that we had identified. We also kind of have a list that, for the county side, and those observations and recommendations, and those capital costings there, and then we also, we also have a component that Miller Legg is working with that we developed that looks at continuous kind of updates of some of those capital plans, in addition to what you currently have funded and have approved those projects, as well as some operations and maintenance projects. And looking at, you know, as we mentioned, some of those grant opportunities for funding that can be used for some of those upgrades. And then as we look at the action plan, at the end, there's an implementation guide of kind of, you know, what do we do next? And so, you know, creating a knowledge base by, you know, making sure that, you know, those goals and objectives are disseminated through the department and that new staff are aware of it, kind of, you know, posting the executive summary for the master plan on the websites, and creating brochures of those executive summaries, kind of conquering and dividing, making sure that, you know, that the different staff involved are being engaged in those projects, assigning members as champions for those projects, dividing some of those up so over fiscal year, so that you're not having a major impact on an individual fiscal year, and then developing strategies for each of those actions. And reporting and formatting, you know, continue doing annual reports like you currently do, but including updates on the master plan itself, telling your stories through those annual reports, and major milestones that you're achieving, monitoring and revising the master plan and that action table as you begin to complete some of those, making sure that you're monitoring those, and then reviewing on an annual basis to make sure that everything is in line and that you're adding those new steps into your annual strategic plans. And so, once you've had an opportunity to review the draft plan, provide feedback, we will finalize the plan, we'll make any edits that come out of that, finalize the plan, and go to our marketing department and put the plan together, and then I'll provide the final plan to staff.
With the city manager's permission, I'd like to challenge you. I studied the results of the survey carefully. The one thing I'm concerned about is you have canvassed residents that live and play here today. Perhaps in the form of an addendum to your plan, you could give us some insight into how you are going to forecast what the wants and desires of those residents that don't live here yet, or especially our children and grandchildren, what their quality of life looks like through these various amenities that you're describing. I think prior city councils have had the luxury of making sure that the amenities that we have here were at top shelf, but I think today we have to balance that with the next several generations that are coming forward. So a challenge, and again, not to go back, but perhaps to add an addendum so that we know that we have considered that as well. With that, are there comments or questions from city council members?
Fully agree.
I have a couple of questions, and so just to be clear as to where we're at, in the back of the presentation, you had action plan and prioritization. It's at the draft right now? Excuse me.
Yes, that's the current draft, and then as Mr. Thatcher mentioned, as we finalize and get feedback, we'll make some last revisions, and then they'll actually put together a full report that goes to their marketing department, and at that point, we would seek to, once we go through comment and feedback, bring it back for final adoption.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that. So I think my two concerns are, one, making sure we're addressing some of the concerns I think probably all of us have heard up here, which is our rectangular fields. I think we're not only losing out on the opportunity to make sure our young people are, specifically in the middle and high school age, are being able to play the sports the way that they should play them, and that they have the amenities that they should have in order to encourage them to continue to engage in those sports. We're also missing out on eco-tourism because, or sports tourism, rather. I know I've spoken to some of our soccer clubs who have come here and said, you know, we want to bring tournaments here, but we can't because you guys don't have the fields. So that's a way to recover a lot of these costs, and to maybe even bring in more money so that we can create more fields. So I'd like to see that prioritized in the plan. I don't know how my fellow colleagues feel about that, but I think it's really important that we prioritize the improvement and maintenance of our rectangular fields. I'd also like to see as a part of the plan, I saw in the slide the financial, kind of what we're looking at for years one to three, and then beyond that. What is the plan to get us there? Because it's nice that we say, okay, well, we think we're going to need $10 million between these years, but where's that money coming from, and what's the plan to get us there? I know that we can, I think that we can perhaps look at ESL funds for land, I don't know for a fact, but I would say that we could work in conjunction with the county. And then there was a reference in here at, when we're annexing inland, to maybe look at annexing inland for extra green space, parks, so I'd like to see that as a focus, and I guess that's a call out probably to staff. If we have the opportunity, when we do annex inland from the county, because I anticipate that'll continue to happen, that we look at opportunities to add green space, to add trails, or to even add actual parks with amenities and fields. So I would like to see those prioritized in the current draft, but again, I'm only one person, so that's just my input. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hyder, comment?
Yes. It looks like we have a lot of parks here. I'm thinking, how many parks are there in Palm Coast?
I'm sorry?
How many parks are there in Palm Coast?
We have 14 parks in the city of Palm Coast.
Okay, so my question is, with the plans that you have in place, are there certain parks that are you going to give priority to as far as the improvements and what you have planned? And what parks are they?
That was taking a look back at the slide that covered the low-scoring components, so that's where we would prioritize taking care of those parks first, as they did score low on that GRASP analysis.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking at the chart. I was just concerned that there would be certain parks in there.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Good. Councilman Clufus?
Absolutely. I think there's a couple of different things I just wanted to note real quick. The concession stand in Holland Park, or, excuse me, that is something that ideally as our council, we can keep in our mind if we find a more permanent home potentially for the historical society, those $300,000 that were attributed to that can potentially be shifted to something else, just wanted to make sure our council keeps that in mind. The second thing I would like to just reiterate is the potential addition of safety equipment as far as emergency misting stations for cooldowns at events of heat stroke or things like that, and then also adding coverings to some of the water fountains. In Holland Park, some of the water fountains are open, and it's just tough when you're really looking for a reprieve for water to be, you know, the heat is just getting more and more intense. So I think in the future, because of our diversity of just the people in our community who use these parks, the range of ages incredibly diverse, I think making sure that we have safety as a forefront is something that we can all be paramount to. Also, the property, I agree with Councilwoman Potieri, that we are kind of space limited, we've had expansions in the Indian Trail Sports Complex in the past, but any opportunities that we have to add to our green space, I think are more than welcome, so thank you for saying that.
And to address those points with the sports fields, our Assistant City Manager and Chief of Staff are working closely with a consultant on a sports feasibility study, and they would be happy to provide an update if that would be helpful to this process as well.
Very good. We thank you very much for the presentation, and we look forward to the next steps, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
With that, now we'll move to Item G, which are ordinances of the first read. So Counselor, if you would read number nine in, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Old Kings Village Comprehensive Plan Amendment Application Number 5505. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan as previously amended pursuant to Section 163 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map flume designation for approximately 62.3 acres of certain real property from Flagler County designation of residential low density and commercial low intensity to City of Palm Coast designation of residential and mixed use, as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance, with site-specific policy to limit development to 210 dwelling units and 30,000 square feet of non-residential use, providing for conflicts, ratification of prior acts, codification, severability, and an effective date. That is the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Tyner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Ray Tyner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. This property was annexed into the city of Palm Coast last month in September, so part of the next process is that we assign the designation of city zoning and city comprehensive plan, future land use map change and zoning change. So our planners, Jose Papa and Mr. Hoover, Bill Hoover, will provide the presentation, Mayor, and because they're companion applications, they are prepared to do one presentation for both the flume and the rezoning, but then we'll have to, you know, vote and get public comment on them separately.
So just for clarification, this is an administrative procedure because of the transfer of the property from the county to the city, is that correct?
It is, actually, it's not an administrative procedure at this point, it is applicant-initiated. They are the applicant, and the applicant will be here to speak as well.
So when property is annexed into the city, do we not normally alter the descriptions or the appropriate zonings to comply with the city?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, we cannot keep the county flume or the rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, since both of these items are going to be presented together, it would also be appropriate to do an oath for the, anyone who's going to be testifying in the item.
Ah, okay. Do you want to?
So if you will be testifying in this item, please rise and raise your right hand to swear or affirm the oath.
Is that for comment, public comment too, or not?
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Counselor?
And then I just wanted to check with all to see if anyone had received any ex-party communications as to this.
A few emails, nothing that'll influence me.
I've been, I've spoken to both sides of, both the applicant and residents, but nothing will influence my decision today.
Emails as well, not affecting my vote?
I've only had communication in training with Mr. Tyner.
I have had email communication, but my correspondence has just been confirming receipt, and I haven't received any information that'll impact my decision today.
Counselor, does that suffice?
Thank you all.
Very good. Okay, gentlemen, please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of City Council. Jose Papa for the Community Development.
And gentlemen, do me fair, bring your mics forward, so people have had trouble hearing, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And also City Council as well.
Again, Jose Papa for the Community Development Department, and good morning, Mayor and Members of City Council. What we have before us today is a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning map amendment application for approximately 62.3 acres of vacant property about two miles south of Old Kings Road, I'm sorry, two miles south of State Road 100 on the east side of Old Kings Road. As previously stated, the property is currently vacant, but does have an approved Flagler County Planned Unit Development Agreement, which limits the development to 232 residential units and 36,000 square feet of commercial use, with some additional limitations on the type of commercial use that can be, have, that they can have on that property. This is the current future land use map designation. As you can see, the bulk of it is residential low-density rural estate, and along Old Kings Road, there is approximately four acres of commercial low-intensity area. Also within the property is Steeple Chase Trail, which provides access to the Polo Club West, which is the subdivision to the east side of the subject property. This is the current zoning map. As you can see, the 62 acres is currently designated as Planned Unit Development, Flagler County Planned Unit Development. So the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, again, from residential low density and commercial low intensity, with limitations of 36,000 square feet of commercial, and uses limited to no convenience stores, filling stations, or fast food restaurants, the proposed amendment is to... The proposed amendment is to residential for a bulk, the bulk of the property, with about a two-acre mixed-use site at the corner, southwest corner of the parcel, and with a note on the future land use map that the development shall be limited to 210 residential units and 30,000 square feet of non-residential uses. Based on the existing PUD and the proposed comprehensive plan amendment with the limitation stated of 210 dwelling units and 30,000 square feet, that tabletop analysis shows that there will be a decrease in the demand on public infrastructure and facilities, and that's probably mainly coming due to the reduction in potential commercial uses on the property from 36,000 to 30,000 square feet. As always, again, that's a 35,000-foot analysis of the impacts on public infrastructure when they come in for a plat, plat, or site plan review, their capacity, the ability of the public facilities to accommodate their impacts at that time will be, again, reviewed as part of that proposed development. Looking at the differences between the current designation and the proposed designation, we find that there will be no additional environmental impacts. Based on the proposed change, there's no negative impact on topography or soils, there's no special flood hazard areas, there are no wetlands that qualify for protection based on the city's comprehensive plan policies, there are no impacts on groundwater resources, it's not within an aquifer recharge area or wellhead protection zone, and it will still be required to provide a cultural resource study and listed species study at site plan or plat. Finally, looking at the surrounding land uses, the proposed designation of residential and mixed use is generally consistent with the surrounding land use designations, existing uses in the surrounding area as more closely analyzed in the staff report. Looking at additional policy of the comprehensive plan, can, the location, this development will be coordinated with the location of public facilities, and again, this, this increase in the densities and intensities, again, will occur where water and sewer will be made available. So findings, there are no significant impact on environmental resources, the designations are consistent with the surrounding land uses, amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies, infrastructures, infrastructure will be made available to accommodate the property. Consistent, the planning board did hold a public hearing on this amendment on September 19th, that we had two adjacent property owners who spoke on behalf of Polo Club West in opposition to the project, citing concerns with compatibility. The planning board did vote five, did vote 5-0 to recommend approval of the flume amendment to City Council. And so the planning board, in conclusion, the recommendation is that the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board found Application 5505 to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommends that City Council approve the flume amendment from Flagler County residential low density and commercial low intensity to City of Palm Coast designation of residential and mixed use with a site-specific policy to limit development on the subject property to 210 dwelling units and 30,000 square feet of non-residential use. Mr. Hoover will give you more details on the proposed zoning map amendment.
So back in 2007, Flagler County approved the 84-acre Old Kings Village PUD for the 232 homes and four acres of low-intensity commercial. In 2009, you can see the green area, so that sort of splits the Polo Club West, and those 21 acres were deeded to Flagler County for like preservation areas, and the project has Flagler County sort of shown in the tan, those are planned unit development areas to the northeast and to the south, and then directly to the east of the project is agriculture and conservation in blue, and then across Old Kings Road, again, to the north of the site, the reason the agriculture up there is in green is that's where the city limits We have 60.12 acres, and that's proposed for single-family residential one with a maximum of 210 homes. That would equate to a density of three and a half units per acre, and then we have 2.19 acres going to general commercial or comm. 2 in the southwest corner, and that has a cap of 30,000 square feet. So the single-family residential one district has 50-foot lots with a minimum square footage of 6,000 square feet. Homes are limited to 35 feet in height, have a maximum density of seven units per acre, and a minimum living area of 1,200 square feet. The general commercial standards would be maximum impervious surface ratio of 70%, maximum building height of 100 feet, and a maximum floor area ratio of 40%. So like most projects coming before you, we have to review it for these five key criteria from the Land Development Code, Section 2.0505. It must not be in conflict with the public interest, it needs to be consistent with both the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, it must not impose a significant liability or hardship on the city, must not create an unreasonable hazard or nuisance, and it needs to comply with all local, federal, and state standards. So we have detailed findings on this in the staff report, and in summary, the petition will not create a nuisance, hazard, or any compatibility issues, as the proposed uses will be compatible with neighboring properties along Old Kings Road, and then concurrency will, standards will apply as the project moves forward. The project, the rezoning meets three goals, policies, or objectives of the future land use element. So this is the subdivision master plan that was submitted September 11th, and it shows 205 single-family lots, and I put some red labels on there so you can see it a little bit better. So the north arrow is to the left, so Old Kings Road is at the bottom, you can see the comm. 2 area in the southwest corner, and Steeplechase Trail has already been built, I think by the previous developer, and you can see Secretariat Lane is the roadway that separates the five-acre lots in the Polo Club from the single-family residential lots that are proposed, and I believe there's like about 10 lots on there. So we did hold a public participation meeting. It was held on September 12th at the Hilton Garden Inn. 10 neighbors attended, and I'm pretty sure they were all from the Polo Club. The applicant's team was there, as well as one representative from Flagler County and one city staff member. The, and then before each public hearing, there'll be two signs erected and also a news ad run. The planning board hearing was held on September 19th, right after the flume hearing. Two neighbors spoke in opposition, with the main concern being the 50-foot wide lots adjacent to their homes across Secretariat Lane. The planning board voted 5 to 0 to find the rezoning in compliance with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to City Council to rezone the property. The next steps for this project, the flume amendment, if approved, will go to the state for review, so it'll be a couple months from now before we have the second city council hearings on this. Presuming those are approved, the planning board would review the residential subdivision master plan, then the, would be staff review of the preliminary plat and construction drawings, and then the applicant's developer would construct all subdivision infrastructure, and then the final plat would come before the city council for review. And then the, the commercial project's a little bit different. The staff would review the commercial project, it would not go to the planning board or any public hearings because it's less than 40,000 square feet, and then staff review of all building permits for residential and commercial. The Planning and Land Development Regulation Board determined the proposed rezoning, Application Number 5506, to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to City Council to rezone 62.31 plus or minus acres from planned unit development to single-family residential one and general commercial. And the applicant's team is in attendance, and they're available for any comments or questions.
So City Council members, any questions from staff first on the presentation?
My only question is regarding compatibility. How is it that staff determined that this was compatible with surrounding uses? Because when I look at the map, I see a lot of rural and agricultural, where this is single-family, not low-density, it's regular SFR1. So how did staff and, if you're aware, how our planning board also determined that this was compatible?
Well, one way to determine compatibility is if you look, if you look in the Land Development Code in Chapter 11, we have landscape buffers. So around single-family residential projects, no landscape buffer is required for single-family residential one unless it's adjacent to a road. So if it's adjacent to a major road, it's, we put a 25-foot landscape buffer out there. I think that buffer has a dual purpose. One, it provides an aesthetic view for motorists traveling along the roadway, and then number two, it provides some screening and buffering from roadway noise for the residents in the community. Now, in this case, if Secretariat Lane was not there, and those homes' backyards were backing up to the single-family backyards in the SFR1 area, no buffer would be required. The, but because Secretariat Lane is a roadway, and I believe it's a private roadway maintained by the Polo Club, a 10-foot landscape buffer A is required along there. The applicant has chosen, I think it's, they'll show you that it's a little bit wider than 10 feet. The, the other thing is, when, in my history as a planner since 1988, I've seen single-family homes next to three-story homes and been able to determine those as compatible with each other. I think when you hit four-story, right next to the backyard of single-family homes, the, when you have five-acre residential lots on agriculture, generally those homes are set back quite a ways because you've got five acres to, for your home site, as well as perhaps horses in this case. So the, I don't really see an issue having five-acre home sites across a roadway with a landscape buffer A in the backyard of single-family residential homes, in my professional planning opinion.
So where, and thank you for that explanation, where, on the map that you showed, where you had your red lettering, where are the buffers that staff is stating makes this compatible? Just on Old Kings and Secretariat?
Correct. The, the buffer is along the, if you see where Old Kings Road is wrote, and written in red, it's just above there, that's 25 feet wide, and then if you go to Secretariat Lane, there's actually a buffer there that's a combination shallow swale, and this is not the landscape plan that was submitted, it's rather just the site plan. So that, that buffer along there appears to be 20 to 35 feet wide, and the landscape architect will determine what's in there is appropriate, and the offering, the developer can offer to plant above what's required in there, things like perhaps cypress trees do well in those swell areas.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. I'll hold my comment for after public comment.
Councilwoman Heider, any comment or questions at this time?
No comments.
Councilman Clufus, any questions at this time?
Just questions for clarification. A lot of the emails that I had received were concerning, obviously, property security and home security and things like that. Is it possible that you talk about the height and the completeness of the wall that will be separating the existing houses from?
Yeah. Counselor, if I, if I could, just for a minute, councillor, help me with this. We have a, well, we have a, take us through the process, and, and I'm not, if, if you want to discuss it, but step four in the process was where we get into the construction. So I just want to make sure you're, we're in the right lane.
Sure.
And councillor, if you can help me with that?
Sure, as far as, Jennifer Nix of the City Attorney's Office for the record, as far as today's hearings, this is just an amendment to the comprehensive plan, so I think that some of the things, when we start to discuss a wall, for instance, that might be a little sooner than needed to address it, you know what I mean? We just need to make sure that, of course, the request before us meets the requirements of the code.
I'll bring it up in the pertinent.
Does that work, does that work for you, councillor? Does the applicant want to add anything to the presentation at this time? Because I will then open it up for public comment.
Certainly, Michael Shmento for the applicant. We have been discussing with the homeowners association's attorney, Mr. Baer, he's unable to be here today, but we're in the process of working on an agreement between the two parties as to how to better buffer, accommodate their concerns and designs. Given his schedule and the scheduling of this, it'll be about a month and a half to two before we're back for the second reading, and we anticipate having an agreement between the parties. That maybe isn't perfect, but certainly addresses some of their concerns. I do also want to remember, remind you all that this is a process that, when cities take in parcels, that they try to make the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code as consistent with their own as possible. This is a straight zoning, so we're not deviating from the Land Development Code, which has been a recent concern of, of the City Council or addresses it. But I also remind you all that this project is part of a larger project of all three developments. It was approved by the county years ago to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and zoning criteria in state and federal regulations. So again, your staff has reiterated that, that it is consistent with those two, or with those governmental requirements. As far as, you know, compatibility issues that I know are important, we are working on that buffer between Secretariat Lane and the proposed development. But I'm not sure if you all were made aware of this, but there was already a project approved by the county that has that issue dealt with, and so we're, we're remaining as consistent with, as we can with that plan. And I'll tell you that right now, we are in another process, parallel process called conceptual master plan. Those are essentially the engineering plans that you see in front of you, and that buffer along Secretariat Lane is actually proposed to be larger than what was approved by the county and is in the current binding PUD. I'll give you an example. I don't, I can't really see that far anymore, but one of the things that we're working on with Mr. Baer is we have moved the fence from Secretariat Lane to the rear of those lots on the eastern side, as you can see, and wrapping around to, I think it's Lot 33, right south of the cul-de-sac. So our, our privacy fence will be applicable or consistent with the city's Land Development Code, and then on the east side of that, I think the minimum is 27 feet, all the way up to roughly 40 feet in areas. There'll be a landscape area, berm, not berm, but a swale to accommodate not only some of our drainage, but their drainage flows onto our property too. So that's where we are with Mr. Baer and working through those, you know, very granular issues. That'll be back in front of you when we get the comprehensive, or when we get the conceptual site plan approved.
Thank you.
We're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, with that, I will open up All right, with that, I will open up this ordinance for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Please come forward and we'll observe the, the three-minute time, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is John Duncan, property owner in the Polo Club West. As Mr. Shmento mentioned, Mr. Baer has been kind enough to assist us with this. Couldn't be here today because he had a previous commitment. However, he did write a letter and it's been submitted to all of you, and we also submitted it to, to Kaylee for, for you to be able to research. I want to read parts of it to you in terms of where we are in terms of negotiations with all this. Mr. Baer states, he said, "This firm represents the Polo Club West Homeowners Association in reverence to the future land use map amendment and the rezoning of Old Kings Village project. After reviewing the most recent conceptual plan for Old Kings Village, my client has significant concerns about the security of our community and the adequacy of the buffering that he's been committed to. While we've been in discussions with Mr. Shmento and his client to try to negotiate a resolution, some progress has been made. Concern still exists." And below are some of our comments here in terms of those concerns. Number one, the fence proposed on the eastern side of Old Kings Village is six feet. It should be eight feet. When my clients purchased the property, that's us, this area was to be buffered with a wall, not with a fence, that was in the PUD, as well as a planted buffer and a twenty-five-foot natural vegetative buffer. So thank you for pointing out the fact that it should be twenty-five feet on a road, not, not ten feet, like it is in Old Kings. The conceptual plan shows the reduction in security and privacy, and the concern is that the current proposal will be detrimental to the property values of the homeowners throughout the Polo Club community. Number two, the proposed fence does not encompass the entire entirety of the Old Kings Village property. At one of the annexation hearings, the city council did suggest that adequate fencing would encompass both the eastern and the northern property lines of Old Kings Village. This would mean that no access would be obtainable into Secretariat Lane. And that the Old Kings Village property line along Flagler County's fifty-foot-wide parcel to the north would also be fenced to Old Kings Village right away. I mean, to Old Kings right away, excuse me. The fence shown will be nothing but a minimal visual buffer, which will not provide any security. We are an equestrian community with horses that can be harmed and also can cause harm. A ten-foot landscape buffer is not adequate, that's what depicted right now. The previous provided buffer width of twenty-five feet must be granted to ensure opacity between Old Kings Village and the Polo Club West. This buffer will need to traverse the entire eastern property of Old Kings Village as well as the north. What we envision is not just a white PVC vinyl fence with some shrubs next to it, we want a comprehensive vegetative plan, which we have not seen, that includes trees and a proper wall to be able to separate the properties. In addition, and then final, there's a twenty-foot gravel emergency access road that's been proposed and depicted on the plan that connects to our private property. Obviously, we do not agree to that as it is our property and it's also a different jurisdiction, so that needs to be improved.
Very good. Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, my name is Bonnie and we also are a property owner. We live at the cul-de-sac at the very end. Ours is the last house on the end there. There is also a one-acre lot that's, but directly beside our, our, excuse me, our property, and that's not really mentioned much. We have two children, so we're very concerned and they are both deaf. So they are needing the privacy and the security in that area. They love to play outside, we have a dog and everything. So basically, as it is right now, there's no wall or anything being mentioned around that piece of property. We did reach out to the owners and they said that they don't own that property anymore, that someone else was gifted that property. So we reached out to him as well, offered him a fair market value for that property, and he doesn't seem to want to sell it. So we still would like to purchase that property, and if not, we would like to see if the wall go up around that property so that we can keep our privacy from being in a gated neighborhood and keep two-hundred-and-ten residents out of our property and of our neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Celia Buglisi, I live in Palm Coast. I do not live in Polo West, but I am sorry for these residents. I know what they're going through. We go through all this. We are with this cell towers now. They, I don't know what happened with the county in two thousand and seven. A lot of things under the county, even though we were not incorporated, were changed to our disgrace, honestly speaking, on the original residential zoning that the ITT proposed. I, I don't understand how could we think even to approve? These neighbors had bought this five acres equestrian property. And horses are very sensitive, they keep their horses on the property. How could we even think to consider to approve next door to them fifty-feet-wide lots? Two-hundred-and-ten properties in that acreage and diminishing the amount of commercial also at the same time? We need to have consideration for what we bought originally here from, no matter if it was the county that changed it or whoever. Maybe they need a land, a good land development attorney that goes through the history of what happened with that property to help them. Like Mr., our attorney helped us to defeat the first tower that the city, the past administration, wanted to install in the golf course. And now we are concerned because on a very vindictive way, the city have decided, well, maybe we can put the tower across a hundred-and-fifty feet from the, our homeowners association, that we are also using the same attorney, if it's necessary to oppose. We don't need to have attorneys to fight the people that we elected. You need to consider, have a heart, five equestrian acres versus fifty-feet lot over grid. This is just plain grid. Don't we, the existing residents, have a right to preservation of what we bought versus who, which rights, how much rights have the new owners of these pieces of land to put next to us? Please, let's think. I am not for the affluent, I am for the little guy, us, but also people that have equestrian properties, the dream of their lives, they spend, they have over two-thousand feet square homes, it's their dream life, it's like you, Mr. Mayor, you have a question in your property. Let's think what is going on for them, please.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am.
Christine Kraus, Flagler Polo Club West. My first thing I want to talk about is we don't have a lot of participation today because it's work, we work. We're asking that the next meeting be a night meeting so that more people can show up. You've got a lot of emails, which I've also gave to the clerk for record. My next thing is the one-acre parcel, I want to talk about that as well, that lot. We keep hearing it's not theirs. So why wasn't it annexed in? If it's not theirs, why didn't they separate it at the beginning? That lot needs to be their lot, needs to be inside the fence and needs to go all the way down to what the engineer stated was the drainage easement. When we had the community meeting, which you guys required, they didn't do it on their own. The engineer in the back that was sitting said we could take it down to the drainage easement, which is on the middle of the north side property. But now they're stating they won't do that. And they say they're trying to work with us, but we received an email stating that they cannot honor our requests. So I want you all to be aware of that. Also, when it comes to the fence and the, the buffer between Secretariat and them, they keep saying they're going to put a landscape buffer. It's supposed to be a natural buffer, the big trees. It's not supposed to be just some little bushes sat in there. It's going to also create a wall and noise resolution and light pollution. So, and also it's going into our swale. And Palm Coast is so big about swales, they don't want people parking them, don't want trees in them, why? Because of their drainage. That, that, their stuff cannot go into our swale. They got to back it behind the swale. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address this item?
Hi, I'm Laura Biddle, I'm in Polo West. I'm the vice president of the HOA for the development. The one comment that we all keep, we've all agreed to make some changes. We know that this is going to happen. We know that we're going to have to work with our neighbors. We're more than willing to do that. The problem that we're having, again, is that one-acre lot. And also too, you said that this neighborhood is comparable to ours or compatible to ours. It no way is, we're five acres. These homes are going to be probably, our homes are probably, our homes and our land are probably four times the value of what's going to be there. So I know from a legal point of view, yes, it's probably how you work and how you understand that it's comparable, but it isn't to us. This is personal. As the one woman was saying, this is our lives. I mean, this is our retirements, we've, we're all worked hard for this. We want you to appreciate what we've achieved and you now have to recognize, we need that one-acre lot either be in Palm Coast as you've annexed it with the agreement from the developer to fence it, or else bring it back into Flagler Beach.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Stacy Duncan. I just wanted to bring, mention to the fact of the homes there on Secretariat. I believe that you mentioned that they have five acres. There's conservation area behind there. So majority of all those homes have had to bring their homes and build them forward towards Secretariat because of the conservation area behind them. All the five, the five acres is not total buildable. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then secondarily, there was mention in these meetings that there were only two people that spoke, but they were speaking on behalf of our whole community. It's, and, and too, the one meeting we had at the hotel, there were more than ten people there. So just want to bring the facts to the record.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilor Richard Hamilton, resident of the county. I didn't mean to speak on this, I don't have a particular opinion on the zoning change or anything, it seems very appropriate that, but that's your, your decision. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. First, I think it's my clear understanding now that this approval today, assuming you approve it, does not affect the discussion of the details of the PUD that's still come forward. That's where I have more of an interest. I just wanted to bring into the mix that there is newly approved this year, a Sun Trail project. That is my particular interest in, in the county as, as a trail advocate. Earlier this year, the Office of Greenery and Trails approved a new proposed Sun Trail project as in addition to the A-one-A River to Sea Sun Trail, is the Old Kings Palm Coast Parkway Sun Trail to come up all the way Old Kings Road, cross Palm Coast Parkway to A-one-A. Jose knows about that. There are elements of that plan that are still very vague. They have approved a corridor, which opens up some funding. In Flagler County, we are proposing, Flagler County's working on plans for the Bureau Creek area, which would bring trails down Old Kings Road to just north of this development. There are plans possibly at the Bureau Ruins Park south of this development that would pick up that trail and develop onto the loop. But there is a gap that will need to be considered as to how do we get the Sun Trail, should be a twelve-foot-wide scenic trail, up between the Bureau Creek, Timoca area, into the south of the Bureau Woods area. And it's going to have to somehow get past the Polo Club and this. I don't know that there is enough right-of-way. We may want that buffer area or part of that right-of-way to be part of that trail. Buffering in general is an area to me that we really have to protect some of our material roads and, and the tree and landscape buffer along them. Coming here, it hurts to see the clearing at BJ's and, because, anyway, I won't get into that. It's just an issue that we will have to discuss in the future. I was on the land acquisition committee when we acquired the Sweet Bottom for the county. And there's still an easement through Steeplechase Trail. The plan is to use that county easement at the north of this to access the Sweet Bottom and therefore perhaps do some kayak launching and things into Bureau Woods. But anyway, that's my concern, but it can be deferred to a future meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'll make this quick because it's been a lot of people up here. My name's Paul Fur and I live in, what we're building in Polo Club West. We, we don't live there yet, we've been building for two years.
Sir, if you'd just move the mic just a little bit, thank you. You don't have to bend down, just, that's good. All right, is that better? Perfect. Okay, I'll, I'll keep it quick, like I said. I just want you to consider what GSM Capital is going to do. They're going to take that sixty acres and wipe it clean. They're going to turn it to dirt. Right now, it is full of giant old oak trees. I mean, hundred-year oak trees, deer, gopher turtles, birds, it's beautiful. There's got to be a way, if you're going to develop it, to make it, you know, compatible somehow, other than just wipe it all out. Because I sent an email out and I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, but I came from Pinellas County, Tampa Bay area. I've been in Florida my whole life. I watched all of that get wiped out. It never comes back. The fish don't come back, the oysters don't come back, the scallops don't come back. And it was interesting that someone spoke about the future of Palm Coast, because this area is beautiful. It really is nice and it's not completely built up yet. Think about the future. Do you want developments that completely flatten the land and put seven units per acre? If you do, maybe consider like planted pines, flatten those, but don't flatten areas that will never come back. That's my only thoughts. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Are there, yes, sir.
Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. Here we are again. If we could go back to the slide, there was five things that said the compatibility. I'd just like to go through them one by one. Right here, must not be in conflict with public interest. There's the public that you're in conflict with. Number one, must be consistent with the LDC and comprehensive plan. That's being adjusted. Must not, must not impose a significant liability or hardship on the, on the city. That's debatable with the traffic counts as it is and the roads and all the construction that's going on and the noise and all that stuff. Must not, must comply with all applicable government standards. Once again, we're teetering on the edge of that. If we could also go back to the other slide too, where it has the, the unit with all of the other things around it, that would be appreciated, because I just want to get a quick visual. Okay, so if we just look at that, up, right, back, the five acres, the houses, what, what isn't showed is all those houses in that parcel. I just want to know where there's another two-hundred-and-ten units. Like how does this meet the standard of what is already there? There's not, there's not another development in that area. It's all agricultural, it's all conservative, it's all woods. This doesn't meet it. And quite frankly, the man dodged the question. He, he talked about the fence and the buffer, he didn't talk about how it meets the criteria and is applicable to the city. So I think that the public deserves an answer on that. And quite frankly, this seems to be the issue with the rezoning in general that's going on. The city isn't being specific on what the intents are with all these rezonings and all these changes to the LDC. Is our intent to increase the tax base? Is our intent to basically increase population so that we have a stronger workforce? I don't know how putting in projects like this really addresses what the city is going for in the future, because quite frankly, we don't have a plan of where we're headed to. It seems like we're just grabbing land wherever we can, we're just throwing houses up on it and we'll figure out the rest later. There was five things on that board, you met two of them maybe, and that's only because you guys have the power to change them. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address the issue at this time on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close public comment. And can the applicant address the, the one-acre parcel? I'm just a little unclear as to that status.
Yes, the one-acre parcel was included in the original PUD that is binding today. It is owned by the applicant. And it was approved by the county and the current preliminary plat drawings that were approved as part of the development. And I remember all three areas of the entire tract were master-planned together. So when some of these residents purchased their home and are building their home, this project or, you know, something substantially similar was approved. So the one-acre lot was always part of the original project and it was also platted So the one acre lot was always part of the original project and it was also platted as receiving access from Secretariat Drive. Now, it has been said that they will not allow it, and I'm not familiar with their covenant restrictions, so I can't answer that. I'm sure Mr. Bear will have an answer to that. But it is presently planned as a one acre lot and has been for, you know, a decade. Couple of other things, the, the compatibility issue. I just, I think staff pointed it out that this project has been approved for well over a decade. It has been modified to some extent and it's being reduced in number of units and the number of commercial square footage. But the gentleman that just spoke about compatibility, I'm not sure the gentleman is aware that across the street, there is a company called Coulter Homes. They are in the process of constructing 1,200 units on about 830 acres. And then directly to the north of that, there's a project called Bureau Creek or Bureau LLC that is approved. It's in the city for roughly 1.9 million square feet of Commerce Park and about 2,000 residential units. So certainly, it's been consistent and compatible with the adjacent neighborhoods. Directly to the south of us, there's a 750-unit mobile home park that is about to start construction. So these projects have been on the books for decades and they're just coming out of the ground and, you know, when these individuals purchase there, I know it's changing, but I didn't want them to think that the city is changing something. It's just merely approving what has been approved for decades.
While you're at the podium, are there questions from the applicant, from city council members at this time?
Not this time. Nothing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Now, are there questions from city council members to staff and comments at this time?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman, you have some additional comments?
Just a few short comments. I, I can appreciate the applicant mentioning the surrounding developments. I, and I'm not, I don't mean to impugn your integrity by any means, Mr. Trimento. I just don't see that in front of me right now. So there's certain things that I'm considering when I look at compatibility. And at this point, when I look at the fact that this was residential low intensity rural estate, which means one unit per acre, I have an issue with changing it to seven dwelling units per acre. In addition, the commercial low intensity is different than what our comm, I think it's comm one now, what that will be and what that will allow. And in looking at the surrounding areas, I don't find this to be compatible. Now, if we are going to rely on the buffers, as staff has indicated, to make this compatible, it seems to me that there is time to make it more compatible via larger buffers and a wall, as was originally planned, rather than an eight-foot fence. So I think there's an opportunity to make it compatible. I don't think we're there yet. If, if staff's opinion, which I rely heavily on, is that appropriate buffers can make this compatible with surrounding developments, then I look to the applicant to make it more compatible before the second reading, but at this time, I don't find it to be so. And that is one of the things that we have to look at when approving this amendment.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Hyder?
Yes, I do have a comment. We've received a lot of information here today, but I do have to say that sometimes we have to put ourselves in the other people's position. And if I had built these five acre lots and put my home there and all my dreams there, and I remember when Polo Club was being built, and I thought to myself, this is going to be absolutely beautiful. So I think that we really have to put ourselves in the position of these residents from the Polo community, when they think that they have made their lives there and now there's going to be this other development, and it may get approved. But from me, I would have to, well, like I said, put myself in their position. And I don't think it would make me comfortable. I, I would have a lot of concerns about it, as they've already expressed, so I don't have to do that. But I think that the applicant should maybe try to work with them a little bit closer and a little bit more so that it can be worked out, if possible.
Councilman Clufus.
Sure. And then Ray had something to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would, I would agree with the sentiment of most of that. I think the technicalities of compatibility, I think one of the speakers said it phenomenally that when we're looking at it from a perspective of land use, that technically, these things, according to staff and probably legal counsel as well, do check those boxes. But in, in a different sense, I can also understand where they're coming from as landowners in Polo Club. And then on the other hand, we also have to remember that any property owner at any time can come and ask for rezoning. You know, we have land rights as landowners and the same way, we have to put ourselves in the shoes as already existing residents. So I don't have any further questions at this point because of the item that we are hearing today. I think in the future, there will certainly be points that are more directly related to some of the emails and communications and concerns of the residents, but at this point, I don't have any more questions for this item.
And just two quick comments from me. I'm challenged because I've heard the word and seen it off a number of times on security. I'm not quite sure what that means. Also acknowledging the fact that the Polo Club is not in the city of Palm Coast. It's, I believe, if I'm not, if I'm correct, it's in unincorporated Flagler County. Not that we don't collaborate and that neighbors are everything, but it is certainly our responsibility to city council to understand where the municipal boundaries are. So security. And then I heard something different today, and I'll have to confirm that, especially because of my responsibility on the TPO, is a future plan for some kind of a trail system, which I'm not familiar with yet, that would create a public corridor through this property, which is interesting and sort of undermines a lot of the conversation I heard about securities and other things today. So I certainly, as a member of the executive committee of the TPO, will have that information available the next time we discuss this issue. Those are my comments, and I'm sorry, Ray, go ahead. You had something to add?
No, I, I apologize, Mayor, but I do feel obligated to maybe state some facts and some clarification, okay?
Come on up, if you want.
You know, staff's position as far as compatibility on this, I, I know Mr. Hoover talked about buffers, you know, that's, that's one component of compatibility. But our, our staff and our staff report was based on, number one, the future land use map amendment that, that Jose presented, and then the zoning amendment that Mr. Hoover presented. And we analyzed it based on the zoning, not, not a site plan. So staff's position with or without a buffer, that, that this would be compatible. So, you know, I want to go back to what the approval was here, you know, when it, prior to this property come to the city, you had a project that was more, had more density, okay? You had single-family residential, and you also had multifamily. And you had more, more commercial land on that piece of property. So the property was then annexed and the applicant was proposing to get rid of the multifamily and to have a single-family product and to have, to reduce some of the, the commercial. So the future land use map amendment analysis that was done showed a less intense project and less available, you know, less level of service standards that, that Mr. Papa did an analysis on. So single-family to single-family is by far absolutely compatible. As you know, in our city of Palm Coast, it's not uncommon to see, you know, house with no buffers. Our, all of our single-family residential districts, you know, they back up to one another. There is no buffer. And I think, you know, what, what we are very hopeful on is that, you know, when this came over to the city of Palm Coast, you have Mr. Bear, the, the city attorney who's working with the applicant, to provide some more assurances of, for, for the residents and working with the residents, as staff is doing as well, is that I am, you know, promising to see that those buffers will, will, will take place in, in working with the residents itself. As you saw, as part of the zoning application, there's a draft, there's an application in for subdivision master plan, that's the first step, and they're actually showing the buffers on, on that plan. And I think more work is going to be done with the applicant, and I'm confident that there's going to be a resolution met, I hope.
Good. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mayor, that prompts another question. Thank you, Mr. Tyner, for getting deeper into this, because I'm, I just need the explanation then as to if there was multifamily and single-family and this was supposed to be more dense, why, how was this previously zoned as residential low density and rural estate? Those two don't come court, so if you could just explain that to me.
Well, the county has different zoning.
Sure.
And what they call, I mean, that, that's a great example. I mean, their, their future land use and their zoning was low, low density. But actually, the project of our comm, what the, what's being proposed, this project is, is less dense than, than what that county designation, because we are, we are doing the city zoning and the city future land use map amendment.
Right, I, I understand that. I, I'm.
Different codes.
I, I get that. Definitely understand, and I understand the difference in the commercial definitions as well. But the county defines their residential low intensity and rural estate as one unit per acre. So how could it possibly have been designated that way at one unit per acre and still have a more dense, I guess, have more density than what is being proposed today? And I, I just, I'm trying to understand this, because I don't, I don't understand the conversion here.
Let, let me clarify. I think there's a mistake on one of the maps. It's, the ordinance that adopted the, the Flagler County Future Land Use Map Amendment for the site was residential low density, not residential low density rural estate, which has a different density allowance. The residential low density is three dwelling units per acre, and the residential low density rural estate, you're correct, ma'am, is one unit per acre. But I will also clarify that the analysis was based on number of units, based on the number of units approved by the PUD and based on the number of units that, that's being proposed with those site-specific policies to limit it. And that, that's what you see in this, on this chart. The current flume designation, and again, we're using actual numbers. It's not the potential for three dwelling units per acre or one dwelling unit per acre. The PUD approves 160 single-family units and 72 townhouses. And that analysis is shown here as to, and as it's translated to transportation trip or trips. Also, within that PUD, you have a limit of 36,000 square feet of commercial low intensity. In our analysis, we always just take the assumption that for commercial, it's going to be a shopping center, and so using the traffic generation from a commercial low and, for a commercial low intensity of 36,000 square feet. And that, and that's the number sets represented here. And so again, for the proposed flume designation, which is the area above the current flume designation, again, we have site-specific policies that would limit the development on this parcel to 210 dwelling units and 30,000 square feet of commercial. And so again, those were translated into the potential number of trips, 210. We assume single-family, that does have a higher traffic generation than if it was 210 townhouses or, or multifamily units. And so in that case, we did take the, the more conservative approach of using single-family dwelling units. And then, of course, 30,000 square feet, again, comparable, that we used the shopping center for the trip generation for that 30,000, whether, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that it would be a different use. We're, we're just going on the assumption of what could be. So again, that's where the, the analysis shows the, the result that, based on those limits and based on what's approved, there is the 41 less trips that the proposed amendment. And again, those are tabletop numbers. We, we say 210, but the site plan says 205 that's being proposed.
But the max is 210, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It will not exceed the 210 and the 30,000 square feet of develop, non-residential development.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and counsel, for us letting us.
Any additional questions from city council at this time? Okay, with no additional comments, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve the ordinance. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from Councilman Clufus. Do a roll call. Please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Elfin?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
All right, now we move right next to ordinance number 10, which is compatible. Counselor, if you could read that in for me?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is for the rezoning application number 5506, Old Kings Village. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the official zoning map as established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. For approximately 62.31 acres of certain real property described as tax parcel identification And parcel number 38-12-31-0000-03040-0080. Generally located on the east side of Old Kings Road, about 2.5 miles south of SR 100, Moody Boulevard, and being more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A from Planned Unit Development, PUD, to the Single Family Residential 1, SFR 1, and General Commercial, Comm 2, zoning districts, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective deed.
Is there any additional presentation for this item?
No, sir, we're here for questions.
Okay, so let me go to city council first. Any additional questions?
I have none.
Spin up. Councilwoman?
The only question I had was, there's a memorandum in the packet to you, Mr. Tyner, from Joseph, Joseph Roviaro. I apologize if I'm butchering that name. But it's talking about the proposed development based on, and the traffic impact. And it's based on the fact that they're assuming there will be a 10,000-square-foot daycare facility in this commercial. Did we base our traffic impact on that? How do we determine the traffic impact?
The applicant's engineer is here, if we want to pose that question then. But typically, what we'll do for their traffic analysis, based on the most intense use that can happen within that zoning district. So a traffic analysis or, or, or traffic study would be determined based on the most intense use that could happen at that facility.
So what is the most intense use? You said a shopping center?
Shopping center would be the most intense use.
Okay, so that's what you base a traffic study on, not necessarily what was presented to staff?
That's right.
Okay.
And then, you know, council members, you know, the next step and what happened now, then we refine that traffic study and it gets more detailed and we require that always at a site plan. So if and when that commercial parcel gets developed, we, we do require a traffic study as part of that process.
And then that will come before us at the same time the site plan does, which will include the buffers and all of the other things that we talked about today.
Well, this, this commercial piece is under 40,000, so this would be a, a staff-approved site plan for that, because it's smaller.
Just for the commercial?
Just for the commercial, yes. The final plat for the residential would, would come to city council. The subdivision master plan would be approved by, by planning board. But city council will have the, the final step of the final plat for approval.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for clarifying those steps for us and the public.
Okay. So as before, I'll open up this companion item for public comment. Is there any addition? Yes, ma'am, please.
Christine Kraus. I just have a question. I want to make sure that that commercial is still, has the old not-alouts, like the gas station, the convenience stores or any of that? Is that going to be in there as well?
That's, that's your question?
Yes.
Staff, can you answer? I think you can answer that.
No. Whatever's allowed, if this is approved in Comm 2, whatever's listed as approval or no zoning district would be permitted. This would be, you know, if there's going to be some sort of negotiation between uses, that would have to be between the, the two attorneys on a private matter.
So, all right, so I understand. I think for the, for the resident, for the, for the speaker's question, there was a mention of a prohibition of certain types of commercial that was mentioned earlier. Is that in play or not in play now? Is that in play or not in play now?
No, sir, this is straight zoning. Whatever's permitted in Comm. 2, and gas station, service station, convenience stores are permitted in Comm. 2.
Is there another designation that could be used, other than Comm. 2, in order to make it more compatible with what was approved previously?
Our city staff believes that Comm. 2 is compatible for this neighborhood, for this area. If you're asking, there are separate, different uses in Comm. 1. Comm. 1 is more of a, you know, neighborhood use, has a little bit less intense use. Our commercial 2 zoning districts allows for a little bit more uses, and our commercial 3 zoning district is our most intense commercial zoning district.
So why not go to Comm. 1? Why did we choose Comm. 2 as the most compatible?
Well, the applicant requested to go Comm. 2 as part of their application, and city staff analyzed the Comm. 2 zoning district for this specific area and found that Comm. 2 to be compatible.
To be more compatible than Comm. 1? Or would they have to have specifically requested in 1?
Comm. 2 was part of the application, and city staff analyzed it as part of, if it was consistent or not with the comprehensive plan or land development code. That's what the applicant has.
Good. The public comment is still open.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. Go ahead.
Just one point of clarification from Mayor Council. Mr. Tremendo talked about that mystery one-acre lot in the northeast corner, which is, you know, it's kind of interesting. I'm not sure what's up with that. But in the original PUD with the county, it did show some proposed access, or proposed access from our cul-de-sac to that lot. It's in the PUD. Obviously, once the PUD is being eliminated, so obviously that will be eliminated. So with the PUD going out, we assume the good and the bad goes out with it. So anyway, there wouldn't be any access available through Polo West. They'd have to access it through their property, or they could apply to the county for their 50-foot road he's been on the other side.
Thank you for that. Yes, sir.
Peter Johnson again, Palm Coast. I'm having a little bit of a hard time grasping how residents in this town, in order to apply for a pool permit, have to have specific drawn-out site plans that get down to the detail of basically what is said at the top of the plan and can be rejected for that. But yet, we don't have to, and this just may be ignorance on my part, we don't have to have that for these major developments. They don't have to have set what's going to be down. I just, I'm a little bit confused at how open this process is, as far as like, we can zone it for this, and then, yeah, it's good for this, this, and this, but they can do whatever they want anyway, whereas residents have to face a stringent list of approval processes for this. It's just not a fair playing field, especially when it comes to massive developments like this. Also, I spoke to Ms. Hyder and Mr. Douglas at the community meeting at the Initiative 2050, and part of the conversation seemed to be that there's a disconnect between the city's information and factual information that's being presented. And Ms. Hyder actually acknowledged that herself, that she on the dais often has a hard time getting misinformation. We just saw here that there was a mistake as far as the state versus the rural. Can we clear this up so that people have a little bit?
Sure, let me offer you this. If you can find the time, you can approach staff, sometime after the meeting, and they can walk you through the development process, which I think will give you every detail and every element along the timeline of this rather lengthy, rather thorough process.
Sure, so I'm not necessarily looking for that for my own personal benefit. I'm saying maybe the city could do a better job, as far as explaining to the residents exactly what's going to be done.
So is it a question from you, or?
It's more of a statement, quite frankly.
Okay, statement, thank you. Thank you for your comment. Another speaker, please.
Take your time. I'm Laura Biddle, resident Polo West. How does a resident change the commercial so that it's a Zone 1, or whatever you were saying earlier? How can we make that happen? You said earlier that a resident could do so.
If I may, I think the applicant suggested, or, I'm sorry, staff suggested that would be a discussion between the attorneys would be the first step for that? And I think you all are hired up with someone?
Yes.
That would be my best suggestion. Staff, are you okay with that answer?
Yeah, I am. It is the property owner who can apply, or their representative can apply for his own change.
So I'm a property owner, so I can then apply for it to change?
Every property owner, if you own property, you have a right to.
Full own, no mortgage, so that I can go in and I can have the attorney then?
Right, yes.
Okay, so then I'll work with our attorney and I'll have a change to a Zone 1?
No, that's not incorrect.
Public comment, so we're not really, we're not really debating here. No, no, hold on, we'll get there. We're not debating with the public right now.
I'm not debating with her. I'm answering her question accurately, because I think there's a misunderstanding.
Let her finish the public comment, and then we can make additional comments.
Okay, my public comment is, as a homeowner and property owner at Polo West, I do not want to see the commercial code be code 2. I want it to be a code 1 where it's more restrictive. My question is, how can I, as a homeowner, make that happen?
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else, public comment now? Okay, now I'll close public comment, and I'll come back to the dais. Councilwoman?
Mr. Tyner, please clarify that for her, because I don't think she understood.
Yeah, I don't think she did either. And Jen, you can chime in.
I'm happy to chime in. I didn't want to cut anybody's conversation off. So Jennifer Nix, again, as far as the lady's comment about what can she do, this is an application for a conventional rezoning that has been submitted by the owner of that property. And what the City Council has to do is look specifically at this application. So it's not that you, as the owner of your own real estate property, can come get this property changed from Comm. 1 to, or Comm. 2 to Comm. 1. You know, it's not, it's not your property to do so. And what the council has to do is simply look at the application that is before it today, which is a straight rezoning application. And we have to look to the code to see what the rezoning standards are and apply those.
So the City Council can discuss and debate a possible change in that zoning when we get to that step. Okay?
Mayor, sorry, I just, I don't mean to get fired up, well, I do mean to get fired up, to be quite frank, but not disrespectful. I just want to make sure, because right on the heels of a comment that we're not relaying correct information, it's seen that there was a misunderstanding. And I don't want it to seem like staff or the dais is trying to provide the wrong information to the public, because I don't think that's anybody's intent.
Right, and that's why we have City Council here to straighten it out.
Correct. My, I have an objection, you know, obviously, we just voted on the previous action. This one, I have a stronger objection to, because it is the rezoning part to Comm. 2. I don't find this to be the most compatible commercial use. I think Comm. 1 would be more appropriate, specifically because it's more compatible with what was in the previous PUD. But also, when we're looking at the surrounding area, I do think that Comm. 1 would be much more appropriate for this specific area and this specific development. So I would propose that we either table this and allow the parties to go back and perhaps discuss a Comm. 1 amendment to this, rather than going to Comm. 2, or that we deny it at this time based on the Comm. 2, not focusing on the residential part, but on the Comm. 2 use of this commercial property.
So can you offer me your rationale for Comm. 1 versus Comm. 2? Just because I'm trying to follow your line of thinking here.
Well, if we look at the Comm. 2 uses, I think that, you know, they open up a lot more uses that were not initially intended for this property. So when we're, it can be convenience stores.
Which ones? Yeah, let's just be.
Yeah, Comm. 2 is much more encompassing of what would be more of like your gas station.
More small businesses, more economic development, more commercial, yeah.
No, no, because that has a negative connotation. Not necessarily small businesses. I mean, you could put a daycare in here that could be a small family-owned business, and it would be compatible with Comm. 1. But Comm. 2 is going to create more trips, it's going to create more traffic, it's going to create more population, it's going to create more infrastructure strain than Comm. 1 would. So, and we just heard from staff, and then if you go to Comm. 3, it increases from there. So I think that Comm. 1 is much more compatible, it's more compatible with what was originally intended. So I would be much more comfortable approving this as a rezoning if it were Comm. 1 rather than Comm. 2.
So you're, okay, I'm just trying to follow.
Just my comment.
No, no, maybe it's an opinion, so we're here to debate. So you're wanting to put a ceiling on the commercial development in that particular area?
Yes, well, specifically too, because if we go back to what this originally was, it was four acres. We've cut it, we've allowed them to cut it down to two acres. And so if we're going to allow, which in the city, we need more commercial, so I do think that we have the ability to give a little bit more pushback and say that Comm. 1 is much more compatible and is more in line with the original intent of this property.
City Council members, you want to reinforce comment, or?
Is there anything that we would create a prohibition list, such as you're asking for, besides the gas stations? Or is this just, I'm trying to also understand where we're coming from. Are we trying to move it to commercial 1 solely because of the gas stations? Or are there other things that you would like it to be prohibitions on the property?
Well, I'm not trying to just single out a gas station. I think even with staff's comment that Comm. 1 is more compatible with neighborhood usage. I think that that is appropriate, considering this is surrounded by neighborhoods and pursuant to the applicant's own statements, we've got neighborhoods kind of going up around this area as well in the future, and I don't know what that looks like, because that's not before us. But I just think that, per staff's own recommendation, that, or I shouldn't say recommendation, but own statement, that Comm. 1 is more compatible with neighborhoods. I find that just to be more appropriate in this spot.
So I'm just, other than the gas stations, what other businesses would prefer not to be there?
I'm not saying that I don't prefer specifically a gas station to be there. What I'm saying is that.
I'm not saying gas station, I'm taking that off the table.
Sure.
What others?
Comm. 2 in general, if we look at, and I don't know the exact list, I'm not a land developer. I don't know the exact list of everything in Comm. 2. But Comm. 2, Comm. 1 is not going to create the amount of trips that Comm. 2 is going to create. I would bet that if we put a traffic analysis and a trip creation analysis for Comm. 1 next to Comm. 2, they would be very different, and that's part of my concern here.
I'd like to hear from the applicants, since they asked for this.
Well, okay. Does the applicant want to comment? We're getting ahead of ourselves in terms of not really knowing what would even be there.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
But it's necessary, because it's zoning. I mean, that's what we're looking at, isn't it?
Well, yeah, but there's a step for that, step four on the previous slide, that gets us right to there, where you'd be able to discuss this with detail with actually knowing something, as opposed to perhaps dreaming or visioning something. But applicant, please?
Sure, not a problem. We understand the concern about, you know, Comm. 2 being broader than Comm. 1. I'll give you an example. I think there are convenience stores, no. Service stations are permitted in both Comm. 1 and Comm. 2. So moving it to Comm. 1 doesn't really solve that specific issue. But we're working with them. I was just talking to the HOA representative, John. And we're working through those issues, and we'll continue to deal with that. We recognize that, you know, straight zoning of Comm. 2 is problematic, and that's sometimes why we deviate from straight zoning and do PUDs. This was not the case here. So the PUD before had a limitation of, I think it was just, let me see if I can't find it. Had a limitation that we were not going to have gas stations, automobile filling stations, and convenience stores. Those were the prohibited uses before, but all other commercial uses were permitted. So I just have the commitment to you that between now and probably about six weeks, this is probably the earliest we anticipate being back to you, that we'll have some type of resolution and agreement with the community. I don't think at that point in time that we wouldn't be able to modify or amend uses in Comm. 1 or even convert it to Comm. 1. I don't know, I don't have the authority right now to say we can convert it from Comm. 2 to Comm. 1. But again, even if we did convert it to Comm. 1, these types of stations are permitted. So we'll work through that with them, and we're working on an agreement. And hopefully, within six weeks, we'll have addressed most of their concerns, if not all of them.
You all could do that, like via deed restrictions, right?
I don't know the answer to that right now.
Okay.
But I understand what you're getting at.
Hi, thank you. So we have the ordinance before us. It's been read into the record. So let's, I'm going to call the vote on the ordinance as it is written today. So I'm going to ask for a motion on ordinance, which is number 10 on your agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve the item as it stands. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilman Clufus. So I will, any further discussion on City Council? No? Okay, then I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
No.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes four to one.
Thank you. We move now to section number H on the Agenda Resolutions. And Counselor, if you would read in number 11 for us, please. We could move right to the presentation.
Okay, for a resolution under item H11, this is a master services agreement for management and technical assistance services, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving the master services agreement for management and technical assistance services with Florida Small Business Development Center at the University of Central Florida, providing legislative and administrative findings, providing for future amendments, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jason DiLorenzo, Chief of Staff. Today, for your approval, we have a contract with the University of Central Florida Small Business Development Center in the amount of $68,000 for a one-year contract. This item is in support of your strategic action plan for a strong, resilient economy. And the UCF SBDC offers a wide range of services to support Palm Coast entrepreneurs and businesses and small businesses at no cost. And today, we have Eunice Choi, the Regional Director of the SBDC, Hal Thayer, the Associate Director of the SBDC, and Michael Oppenheim, a Certified Business Consultant, who are going to provide you a presentation on the offerings of the SBDC. And then I will be here to answer any questions you may have about the contract. So, Eunice?
Thank you, Jason. Good morning. I'm very honored to be here to briefly talk about who the SBDC at UCF is and what we do. We are a member of a Florida SBDC network, and the network was established in 1976. We are a nationally accredited program, and SBDC at UCF, in part funded by US SBA. And we serve eight counties in Central Florida counties. And on your slide, you have a list of those eight counties we serve. And our hosting institution is the University of Central Florida. So we are UCF employees, and there are currently eight satellite offices covering eight counties. And next slide shows the hosting institution for each SBDC regional centers. And in the state of Florida, as I mentioned, we are funded by US SBA, but we are also part of a state university system. So our eight-county territory is hosted by University of Central Florida. And our mission is, as you can read here, we are here to serve small businesses start, grow, and succeed by providing one-on-one customized consulting services. And we also provide a lot of educational seminars. And our vision is, we would like to be recognized as a preeminent and go-to organization and resource for small businesses to further economic development. And this is a brief list of services provided, and Michael will go over in depth, more in depth, about services we provide. But we are providing business consulting, customized consulting services, and we also offer a great deal of specialized programs such as government contracting, international trade, export marketing plan, CEO exchange around-the-table program, and Advisory Board Council program. And we also, as I mentioned, present a lot of comprehensive business educational seminars to provide information to educate the small business owners. And we also provide extensive market research. And we also provide extensive market research. But with all of this, our goal is to increase economic impact in the region. So usually we track the increased sales and capital acquired, the government contracting one, and also improve the managerial experience. So we track all of these in, through survey, and we also report back to funding partners. So Michael, you win.
Thank you for the opportunity to present in front of you, City Council, Mayor Alvin, Vice Mayor Danko. The next two slides that you're going to see is going to depict the variety of services that we offer to a diverse amount of clients. So we assist people from their idea of thought that they might want to open a business and how to get there, as well as we help support businesses who are requiring million and multimillion dollar loans to help assist to grow their existing businesses from a working capital perspective as well. Oops, sorry about that. This slide shows additional services, but one I want to point out is the disaster recovery services. And a great example is what happened to our neighbors in the Southwest in Fort Myers and Naples area. And the SBDC provided their mobile bus to go down and assist the residents immediately on getting disaster recovery loans. And I do remember, I think it was four or five years ago, that I sat in the, our Palm Coast Library after Irma and Matthew and helped process disaster recovery loans for people. And then the SBA came down and opened the, they had a facility at the Flagler Beach City Hall, and I was there as well, helping process loans. And then with COVID, quite frankly, processing PPP and idle loans for small businesses to get them, you know, to the other side. We also can have a variety of training webinars where we provide continuous learning for our client base. These are hosted monthly by us, and then they remain online, and we refer our clients to them in the event they need additional assistance in that regard. We don't just rely on the experience and expertise of our consultants. What differentiates the SBDC is the tools that we have as consultants at our side to help our clients get there. And just one example, if you look to like Bizminer, for example, if you happen to own a florist shop, I can take the P and L of a current florist shop and compare it to all similar sized florist shops nationwide, Southeast United States, the state of Florida, and even Northeast or Central Florida. So I could look at the client's P and L and say, you might not be spending enough on marketing. You might be spending too much on personnel. Your rent might be higher than the national average or the average in the state of Florida. Another thing that works well is all small businesses, we encourage them to open, to launch websites. We assist in that service as well. We have access to a program called WoRang. And what WoRang does is spits out literally a 34-page report on SEO for their website. Because if we like it or not, SEO and being where you rank on Google is the key to businesses being successful. And the majority of our small business just don't have the expertise to do that. So we help them grow their revenues, increase employees, to get where they need to be. This next slide are just, these are past clients that we've worked with. These are all existing businesses in Palm Coast. I believe a lot of you, or most of you know, Jody Salti said, redefine food company. And we helped them open a business, what is it, five or six years ago? Bedtop Mattress. They're a mom and pop, husband and wife who moved to Florida and said this is what they want to do. And seven years later, still have a strong working relationship with them and help them for new product introduction, different marketing ideas. And so we continuously have, we're there as much or as little as a client wants to be able to assist in their growth. This is just an example of Gary and Judy over at Bedtops. They're strong supporters of the SBDC. They're very happy of the services that we provide. And actually, they were nominated for SBDC Orlando, Central Florida Small Business Recommendation Award last year. And this is another client. We helped them get a loan to move from where they were renting a facility to build their own facility, a build-to-sue CrossFit facility just down the road on State 100. This, I was reluctant on showing this, but I know a lot of the people on the staff and maybe even some on city council, through Barbara Fedor, she recommended over the last several months, three particular clients to the SBDC. And these particular projects have a huge impact on the city of Palm Coast, and I am personally working with them directly to try to make these happen. Some are in the permitting process, some are in the pre-planning process, some are in the planning process. And so the SBDC is helping them get there in terms of financial pro forma, business plan, loan applications. And what we try to do, it's not always, but we try to work with local banks. We, I personally have done a lot of loans with intracoastal, and so we get to provide assistance for them and leverage their expertise of knowing what's going on in the city of Palm Coast. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Eunice to close out the presentation. Thank you for your time.
So we are here to reestablish the SBDC at UCF thanks to your budget approval. We had the full service center in 2011, but we had to close it in 2019. So without local dollars, we were not able to provide the services at the full level. So it was provided by Orlando office. But anyway, I am so glad to be here to talk about reestablishment of the SBDC at UCF. And I would like to briefly share our client service summary. As you can see, yeah, we serve more than 2,500 clients in our eight-county areas by providing over 20,000 consulting hours. Those consulting services are provided by certified professionals, and we also provide a lot of educational seminars. And last year alone, we educated more than 2,000 small businesses. And this is the demographics of our consulting clients. And as you can see, underserved market clients is very high, and women own the businesses, veteran-owned businesses, and minority-owned businesses. And we are very proud that we are making a contribution, furthering local economy. And as you can see here, this is based on client's survey data. And we assisted for more than $66 million in capital access. And these are reported by our clients. And we also reported more than $100 million in government contracting in our areas. And also, we were instrumental of creating over 160 new businesses last year alone. And jobs supported and saves generated, so you can see all of those here. And I would like to wrap up my, our presentation by sharing some recognition and honors. We are very proud. And we started to track in 2000, the year of 2000, and until this year, we had 42 US SBA award winners. This is a national recognition. So they recognize successful small businesses by judging their community contribution and growth rate and resiliency and many more. So we are very proud that we produced 42 business award winners. And also, we offer UCF graduate-level student program, and that is called the Small Business Institute Project. And we have 19 SBI project of the award winners. And this is our last slide, sharing some pictures of award winners. So thank you so much, and I'm here for your questions.
Question, and Mr. DiLorenzo, if the question is more appropriate for you either way. As your map showed, your presentation is very UCF-centric. I do understand that. I want to make sure that our agreement doesn't hinder our current or future relationships with the other universities that we're also working with today. So I think you referred to it, so how do you collaborate with the other universities in the region?
Oh, definitely, yes. Yeah, we collaborate the entire network, especially whenever we don't have in-house expertise, we reach out to other regional centers. And also, UNF is another host covering up to, down to St. Augustine. Actually, when we had this, in 2011, the SBDC center opened, we, the, of Gru back then, he discovered the SBDC, he heard about the SBDC program through UNF SBDC. And since Flagler County is within our jurisdiction, it was referred to us. But we collaborate with all other regions in the country.
So there are no exclusivities described in the agreement?
No, sir.
Perfect, good, okay.
Mayor, no offense, Councilmember Pontieri, but we started with UNF in this discussion, but we learned that we are not in their region. Obviously, we wanted to, you know, work on our, our current collaboration with UNF, their, you know, their facility that they have here. But because of how the regions are broken up, we, then, once we were told that wasn't an opportunity, then we met with Ms. Choi and her team.
Very good, okay. Very, very good, thank you. More questions?
I have no questions at this time.
I think it's a good thing that we ended up in UCF's region, I was a night myself. No, thank you for the presentation to both of you. My question was more for staff, and I understand that SCORE used to do this or was previously doing this service, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. In previous to 2019, but I'm not sure how far back beyond that, we had services of both the SBDC and SCORE. Now, SCORE is a little bit different. We provided them a grant for actual, on a per-hour basis, for actual time they were spending with clients. And SCORE is a full volunteer organization where SBDC is a little bit different and has a stronger connection with the SBA and is able to, as you heard from Mr. Oppenheim, able to work directly with the banks on behalf of the clients, where SCORE can kind of provide guidance, they can mentor, but they are not, they don't have the direct relationship with SBA.
Okay, so then is it accurate to say that this is a new line item in our economic development budget at this point?
It is. So in this, in the 24 fiscal year budget, we included this dollar as a line item for this. We removed SCORE altogether. Now, in 2019 and previous, there was a, SCORE had a $3,000 grant to provide services, and then we also had the SBDC portion as well. When we closed the SBDC contract in 2019, we expanded the SCORE grant to 7,200. But in the 2024 budget, we are no longer providing a grant to SCORE. However, I'm happy to tell you, and we should thank them as well for their services over the last four years, that they have requested to still have opportunities to use our conference room, and they intend to still remain in the community even though we're not providing a grant.
Okay, thank you for that. I mean, I think this is great. We have a really big, I think, effort in the city to help our economic development right now. So I look forward to seeing the progress that you all make on those three specific projects that you had mentioned, sir, earlier, the Family Entertainment Center and the other two. Coffee and Wine, what was the third?
The soccer training facility.
That's right, soccer training facility, which would be fantastic. So I look forward to the work that you all can do in our community for our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I have worked with SBDC before in the past, and I'm looking forward to you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onward and upward. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for your participation in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your presentation. Thank you very much. And I will now open up this item for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment? Yes, ma'am.
Celia Puglisi, resident Palm Coast since 1991. I would like for our council and our mayor, at the end of the first year of this contract, which is, I understand, is $68,000 a year, correct? Will really assess the benefits to the small businesses and see how successful they are for our investment. Because living here for 33 years and owing business myself for about 30, I have seen businesses going up and down, and I have seen several different cities since we incorporated. And in the county too, they had an economic development before. I've seen them one by one, this type of programs being funded and being closed down, one after the other, whether it was county or city, given to the, was not, they were not effective actually helping the local businesses. So I really hope that this one will be effective on the right way, because it's not easy for business starters in Palm Coast and probably in the county. But the best way to see that we're getting our services for our invested residence taxes is to do a complete assessment after the first year to see if this is worth or not. Let's do not do like we did before, that we were year after year after year and a lot of money invested, and nobody had the guts to say, no, this is not working, okay? That's all. I wish them a lot of success.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker? Yes, sir.
Greg Blasey, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. I wanted to come up here and share our support for the SBDC. We had been working with Michael and his team for several months to get us to this point. And small business is huge in the city of Palm Coast specifically. You've heard the numbers before, somewhere upwards of 80%, maybe even upwards of 90% of all the jobs in this community are small businesses. It's a hard number to track, but SBDC needs to be here. As you know, or you've probably heard, the chamber gets a grant to help support small businesses through Career Source. And I can tell you that we just, we don't have the bandwidth to cover them all, and it's not our design to cover them all. But the amount of people that showed up, we did a entrepreneur conference in June, and Michael was there, and we sold, it was a free conference, but we sold out of tickets within two weeks, and it was several hundred local business owners showed up. And you could tell that in the community, there's a thirst for this service, that there's a thirst for some sort of support, more support for small businesses even than what the chamber's offering. So I just wanted to come up here and lend the chamber's support to SBDC. They do exceptional work. We've been talking with Michael for many months and some other staff members as well, but we're 100% behind us and think it's only a good thing for Palm Coast. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. Is there any additional discussion on the dais at this time? I think we're all convinced that this is a good move forward.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'll second it.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Danko to approve, and a second from Councilman Clufus. Any additional discussion? Then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda. Are there any items in the consent agenda that City Council wants to discuss specifically?
I have none.
The only one, I had made a request that anybody who had applied for our cultural arts grant, please reach out to us to let us know if there was any specific financial need, if there were any cuts that were made to your organization. The only one that I heard from was the chorus, and it's my understanding that right now we award the grants based on them simply qualifying for the grant itself. I would just ask that maybe in the future, we look at actual need for these grants, especially as our, you know, our finances in the city, we're looking much closer at and having to unfortunately make cuts in certain places. I understand we want to try to spread the wealth, so to speak, as best as possible, but when we do look at some of these organizations who are in a little bit more need than others, I think it's important that we consider that. And so I'm hoping that that review process in the future can maybe change a little bit. And so I'm hoping that that review process in the future can maybe change a little bit. I hate to exclude anybody, like I said before, but I do think we need to look at need. And by virtue of just submitting an application, I don't know that that should necessarily qualify organizations, because it seems that the Palm Coast, that the Corus, that they're going to hurt very much from us essentially cutting previously $3,000 down to 1,100, and I think $11. So it's just something to, maybe for staff to think about in the future. But other than that, I have nothing that I wanted to pull from the consent.
Good, good comment. Thank you. Councilman Hyder? I do have one comment on the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, is rich with rather detailed utility items. So I'm going to ask City Manager, please, to reach out to each City Council member individually and invite them to tour or at least be given enough information to understand how these items work together. Personally, I think that, I certainly would like to increase my expertise on the details involved in reinforcing these utility items. I don't know enough, so I will certainly go out and personally, not just visit, but say hello to all of the folks that are working there, get their input, so that I feel much more comfortable as we have to consider these utility items going forward, because they are, you know, not the, how can I put this? They are the lifeblood of everything we do going forward. There's no getting away from that, so incredibly important. It's not the heart, this is the circulatory system that makes us function, so I want to understand it as best I could. So City Manager, if you would do that, I'd appreciate that. And with that, I would open up the consent agenda for City Council, I'm sorry, to the public, for any member of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda.
Hello, Denise Garcia. I'm the President of the Garden Club of Palm Coast, and I just wanted to remind you all that we've been putting on the festival for the past 10 years. It does cost us money to put that festival. We don't have funds. The funds that come from, that we generate from the festival automatically go to restricted, which means that they go into an account just for scholarships. We do not use that money to run our club. We do not touch that money. Dropping us to $1,100 if we receive the grant this year does hurt us, because we try to send children to Akiva Summer Camp, we send, we send $5,000 for high school graduates. We also send children to Whispering Meadows, we send children to other camps. So again, just keep in mind, please, that when we put on the festival every year, we work very hard for that, and the money is restricted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker?
Celia Buglisi, Palm Coast since 1991. Okay, I do have three items on the agenda that I have questions, Mr. Mayor. Number 14, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for your request to the City Manager. Very good request. Regarding item, regarding item number 14, I will please ask our City Council and Mayor that when they go to man, the city, the street manholes rehabilitation, they really need to look into some of those manholes, because, you know, when they repave the streets, they go over and over, and then the, the top of the manhole gets, gets sunken in there. Every time you go with your car, you go kaboom, kaboom, yeah, because it really can ruin your car. So something has to be done. If the manholes are going to be rehabilitated, engineering needs to get involved and see that the rehabilitation creates manholes with covers higher to go to the surface of the street. Item 15, this resolution, we're going to change the logos, I guess, for what we have here with a wave, right? The new logo has a wave. Is that what you're talking on the resolution, number 15, approving a master price agreement for promotional designs, I hope they had three Bs, for citywide custom logo apparel?
This is the vendor. Just the vendor.
Just the vendor. But what are we, are we going to be buying with them?
It's not, it's not the artistic design?
No, they're not going to change the old logo to the new one, right? Okay. Because if it's a new...
Well, stop.
No, I don't understand what is this for. Don't take my three minutes, please, out of this explanation, because I have another question.
So my understanding is this is specifically for the vendor. We're not changing design or, or...
You are correct.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, Celia.
Okay, so how much is the cost of, of these logos?
So this, just to close on the conversation, this is a contract with a vendor to order uniforms through.
Ah, ah, okay, okay. So then it was kind of deceiving to me. Sorry. I do have one more. This is for the item 19 on the, on this resolution. This is about, excuse me, amendment on partial release of restrictive covenants. Which restrictive covenants are that? City restrictive covenants that they are going to release? I'm sorry, I don't understand this. Restrict, are restricted city covenants are wonderful. It's what keeps the city beautiful.
I'll have staff come up when you finish your public comment.
Okay, this is what I wanted to know.
Okay.
That they are restricted covenants.
As soon as you finish, I'll have staff answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. The restricted covenants are for the stage at Town Center, formerly known as the Palm Coast Arts Foundation, at that site.
So what that does is it frees up that site so that it can be used for any venue that the city approves?
It frees up the Palm Coast Arts Foundation from those obligations. The city will maintain it as an arts and cultural amenity until the grant concludes in 2026.
So it's a transfer, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the consent agenda? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I know we're all in a hurry to try and get over, out of here. I did stand up early.
Introduce yourself again.
Okay, Richard Hamilton, a citizen of Palm Coast, Flagler County. Last workshop, I stopped by and I listened.
Richard, I'm sorry, is this about a consent item?
Yes, this is a consent item about the cultural arts grants.
Okay, thank you.
Last week, I stopped by and I heard some very thoughtful, insightful comments from Councilwoman Pontieri, from yourself, from others, which made me stop and think about what I could do and contribute myself. I agree with most of the comments you made, but I also just wanted to comment that choosing between different arts organizations is a difficult and complex task, and it's often thankless. And you should thank the staff that spent their time and efforts in, in deciding how to allocate, even though it ended up as a, did you meet the criteria or not? But they did, they did the job as you asked them to do, and I fully agree that going forward, we should have a good look at the criteria on choosing these and, and the process that you have. I don't see why organizations like the Cultural Council or the Education Foundation, which are supposed to be giving out money to arts and culture, should be absorbing it in this round. So those are things you need to look at in the future and be glad to help. For 20 years, I've been interested in arts and culture in the county. I don't have any talent, but I have volunteered my time at the Flagler Auditorium Governing Board for almost 20 years. The Florida International Festival, which no longer exists. I was a founding chair with others, including Euroco Historians and the Cultural Council. And as I said, I, I wrote their IRS applications. I know their principle is to help organizations, not take your money. They might, as they get themselves going, be an organization to work with in the future. But I also am a personal donor. I'm sure you all are. And I almost wanted to shout at you, like, $20,000, is that all you can afford? I mean, you've got 100,000 people almost in the county. I mean, what quarter? That's all you give per citizen, not even that. $20 is worth like 100 people. So if you review your processes, please also consider giving the arts and culture a little bit more in the future.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment at this time on the consent agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the item, and I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
The Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to public participation, final public participation on items not previously appearing on the agenda.
Good afternoon, George Mayo, Palm Coast. The previous County Commission meeting, I had reported to them in an article here, I will give to the clerk, about a spearfishing with, between the city of Fort Lauderdale and a construction company that was building a new police station for $147 million. Somebody got into the city account and into the construction account, sent for a bill with all appropriate paperwork for $1.2 million. The city paid it to this account, then found out it wasn't a construction company. They do not appear to be able to recover that money. Approximately two days later, Flagler Board of Education paid out approximately $700,000. Chief Staley said they may not be able to recover that money. I would just like to be reassured, I've asked here many times about our IT, IT Director Matt for the county said they are aware of spearfishing like this, and they have taken appropriate measures, just to make sure our departments are aware of this and will not, hopefully not let this happen. And if the Flagler Board of Education asks the money from the county and the city to help replenish some of this, you will come to the public and say they're asking for money to help replace this. My second problem is, last Thursday, I was driving north on Town Center Boulevard, going, coming, approaching the Majin School there. There was a tractor trailer and two cars in front of me. All of a sudden, the tractor trailer came to a quick halt, the car in front of him came to a quick halt and parked in the road. There were approximately eight cars going northbound, parked in the road, wanting to pick up their kids. There were approximately eight cars going south, parked in the road, wanting to get into the kids. They have a long entrance driveway, it was full. They have a long exit driveway, there were no cars there. I called 911 and said, the road is blocked. If emergency vehicles needed to get there, they couldn't do it. This tractor trailer drove on the wrong side of the road. There's a curve in the road with low-hanging trees. You can't see from one end to the other. The cars and I just followed him to be able to go north. I hope the city can have somebody contact the Sheriff's Department. You can't have a roadblock just because people want to pick up their kids. So I hope something could be done about. I would hate to see there be an accident, because you're driving along, there were people wanting to come the other way. If you can't see them, they're going to meet in the middle and something's going to happen. So I hope we can do that. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you for your comment, yes. Any other members of the public? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Ed Fuller, Honorable Mayor Althan, Honorable Vice Mayor Adanko, Honorable Theresa Carleva Pontieri, Honorable Kathy Hyder, Honorable Nick Clufus. I want to thank you all, and I want to thank the city services, I want to thank utility department, I want to thank the water department, I want to thank the fire department, I want to thank the sheriff for that weather event we had last week. The response you gave was unbelievable. Unbelievable. The men and women we have working for this city were rapid, rapidly deployed and did an excellent job. You don't hear it enough, but when you have an emergency like this, that is amazing, amazing response. And Mayor, I'm going to get you a hat when you get on TV, so it'll be the University of Kentucky, so you can wear it right next to the sheriff, because he's a University of Louisville graduate, and I hope he's hearing it. He did do a great job. But thank you all for that wonderful response. I know you all didn't get any sleep that night or the next night, and usually after a weather event like that, there's, 50% of people are injured after the event. And thank God we didn't have any of those injuries. So thank you all for a wonderful job, and I appreciate your doing a super job. And the other thing is the Pink Army deal. It was a great collaboration between you and Advent Hospital. Unfortunately, I didn't attend. My dog would not allow me to do it. He said I wasn't in shape, but he got sick. But that said, that was, that was a wonderful community event. Thank you very much, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If there are no other speakers, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
My name is Marion. I have been a neighborhood watch leader and spokesperson for residents in the R section of Palm Coast for 13 years. Residents have asked that I speak on their behalf today, as they are very concerned with this administration's future plan for Ralph Carter Park. The residents are in possession of the initial plans for this park documented at the county office in 2011. The plans clearly depict this park was designated to be a family-type peaceful park with low-level lighting. In fact, this type of low-level lighting was initially installed when the park was first built. However, this administration, in trying to turn this residential park into a sports complex, has clearly violated all of those initial plans. This administration has removed the proper level lighting and replaced the lighting with 12 illegal high-powered stadium-type lights. These lights are not conducive to any park located in the center of a residential neighborhood, with residents' homes, bedrooms only yards away from the park itself. The lights from this park currently shine over the entire R section, adjacent to the park and as far back as three streets from the park. The current administration of our city allows these high-powered lights to be on every weekday evening until 10:00 PM, way past the bedtime of many residents and their children who have to get up very early the next morning for school or work. The high-powered lights yell screams and whistles from sporting events in this residential park shows absolutely no concern for the residents living in this area. Residents ask that the upcoming plans for Ralph Carter Park include the removal or redirection of these illegal high-powered lights, redirection away from residents' homes and the entire R section adjacent to this park. As you are all aware, the lights' yells and screams from support, from sporting events at this park every weekday evening have caused a great hardship to those living adjacent to the park for over a year. I've been at this since September of 2022, and this administration has ignored every plea from the residents to rectify the situation. The residents ask you all to consider, and we've asked this, I've asked this at every meeting with the City Manager and her staff, how would you like this in your backyard? Every time I ask, no one answers me, so we know the answer. No, you want, would not want these atrocities in your yard. So this situation is really serious, and it's affecting the health and quality of life for the residents that are living in this area, I'm sorry. And they deserve the same consideration as everybody else in Palm Coast. And we ask if something be done immediately. I have a packet here of all the lights shining on everybody's homes. It's horrible. Can you please, now, starting today, tonight, just the lights that are right on our homes, turn them off. You have more than enough lights on the fields, or redirect them to the school. We're begging you, because I get calls, I get calls all the time from people, and I feel helpless.
All right, we appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
And if you give the package to the clerk, I would appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close our final public comment, and I will come back to the dais for final comment on items not on the agenda from City Council.
Before we go to that, I just have a question, because I've, I've gotten a lot of letters like all of us have about that lighting out there, and I've driven out there. It's pretty intense, and I would, I'm just, I'm just curious, and I'll ask our City Manager if there's, I know you've been discussing this. if there's, I know you've been discussing this with the community out there, is there any solution we can come to make this work for everyone?
So we have been in constant conversation with a vendor to look at solutions that can help shield the lighting. We're waiting to get a quote from that. And also, I would just like to extend another opportunity to meet with Ms. Petrucci. I actually met with her, I think, around April, so we're in constant conversation as well to have, to have those factors extended to them.
Are there any lights we can just turn off that are hitting those homes directly?
Well, let, let staff come up, and we can talk about that a little bit.
So, all right.
Just curious to where we're at in this situation.
Yeah, this, I'm just gonna recommend that you have a, a meeting directly, I'll go ahead, with City Manager to get into the details, because this is not an agenda item, and I think that you're going to find there are a lot of details, but I encourage you to do it, but we'll go ahead and finish it up now.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jason Di Lorenzo. Vice Mayor, we made contact with Musco, and they came, that's the provider of the lighting system, and they came, they came on-site and did an evaluation, and we're waiting for their engineers to provide us that additional details of what changes we can make. There are some different-sized shields they have indicated that are available for the type of lighting that we have installed already, but they're gonna provide us with several options to look at that. As far as turning some lights off, we have looked at that opportunity as well, but you know, we're balancing the needs of the community, the children, right, that use the, the fields, right, and, and the safety of the fields itself. So we looked at turning some lights off, but it creates shadows on the field, which create a safety issue. So we don't, we don't advise that right now, but we're waiting on a full report to come from Musco, and then we'll provide some details.
Do we have a date on when that report might be made available?
No, quite frankly, they've been a little bit difficult to work with, but they're the vendor we have to work with because it's the system that we have. Musco's a huge system, I mean, they light the Daytona International Speedway. So we're...
Are we talking a month, two months?
It's already been about a month. It's already been about, around a month, but we have been reaching out to them constantly to try to get this information back to us.
Okay, well, I would just ask that we reach out to them further, I know it's, but the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so be squeaky, you're good at that.
Yes, sir, I think, yeah, I, I would, I read an email that we have been calling them constantly to get this information back. And when I say that we have been waiting for about a month, it's been about a month since they were on-site. We worked for several months before that to get them to come on-site. So we're, we're working the...
And the only thing I would ask our City Manager, continue the conversation, to try to find a solution, and if anyone here has not been out there at night, I suggest you take a ride out there. That's all I have on that.
Good, and I would, I would offer you, Vice Mayor, a chance to share that input that you have with the comprehensive plan study, whether it'd be very appropriate in terms of not just that park, but other parks as well.
Sure, absolutely.
Good. Councilwoman Ponti...
Just my final comment, again, I just want to echo the comments we heard earlier from Ed on what a tremendous response our Fire Department did, our Sheriff's Department, everyone did, in that, in that situation with the tornado over in the B section. Folks got up early and did just a wonderful job, and I just want to thank everyone that was involved. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pontieri?
Yeah, I'd also like to echo my gratitude for our staff. Thank you so much, you all did a phenomenal job. Thank you to our City Manager and our Fire Department and our Sheriff's Office as well. I, on a weekly basis, probably follow up with the City Manager on Ralph Carter Park. I can guarantee you, our staff is trying very hard with Musco to get those estimates. I appreciate staff continuing to put pressure on them. It's unfortunate that we're kind of handcuffed by them not, I, I think, probably realizing how important this is to our residents, so hopefully this plea from the DA's maybe will help that process. The last thing is, there is an event for our Flagler County Kiwanis Club coming up on the 29th. That's a great organization for our youth. They always do a yearly dinner, it's a Las Vegas-style entertainment, style dinner and fun and entertainment. They have a silent auction, it's always a really successful event, so I encourage you to go to their Facebook page and look up that event to help our youth. It is on Sunday, October 29th.
Thank you. With regard to a prior public comment, each City Council member is required to complete a rather extensive training on, the term phishing was used, but there are many more terms besides that, so I would encourage each of us to get finished with that training as quickly as possible.
Yes, Mrs. Petrucci, I'd like to say that I know that you have been working on this situation for quite a long time. I know since I've come on City Council, we've met with you several times, and I know that the City Manager has been working at it. I have been out there several times at night, and between the lighting and the traffic, it's really bad, and it does need to be addressed sooner than later. So thank you.
I concur with that. I would like to extend, just basically, a thank you to everyone who reached out. My absence last week, I was with my father, he had a medical emergency, and just wanted to extend my thanks and gratitude to everyone who showed support during that time. I appreciate that a ton. Food Truck Tuesday tonight, right?
Last one.
Yep, last one, and then regarding one of the consent agenda items, it was about manhole covers. Manhole covers, fun fact, the reason that they're circular is so that if you take them off, they can't fall into the manhole, seriously. So that's a fun fact, learned that the other day.
We really appreciate that, thank you.
It's true. That's why they're not square.
Appreciate the levity, yes. I will ask, does the attorney have any final comment?
No, thank you.
City Manager?
I have just two things. First, you have your emergency sole source item in the packet. Any questions on those? Okay. The second is, I want to echo some of the sentiment today about our response to the EF2 tornado. I know our Flagler County Emergency Management was up at 3 o'clock in the morning on that day, but I wanted to also give Chief Barry Hill opportunity to share a few thoughts, and also, we expect about 17 building permits to be sought for summer repairs, and we're waiving those fees.
Oh, good. Nice, nice.
Thank you, Ms. Bevan, Fire Chief Kyle Barryhill. I just wanted to give the, you, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the response to our tornado Thursday morning. So at 4:48 in the morning, we started receiving reports, 911 calls for damage to homes, and folks that, we, we heard a car accidents in a neighborhood that we don't usually hear loud car accidents at 4 o'clock in the morning. And very quickly, our B shift was on scene, Engine 24, Engine 21, Engine 23, Battalion 24, and quickly realized that we'd had a, a weather event, along with Flagler County Sheriff's Office deputies. We had overturned cars, we had 17 homes, as Ms. Bevan mentioned, and those homes damaged, that doesn't include damage to like outbuildings or structure or fencing or this, that's damage to the domicile, it's using our, like a FEMA formula that would help us say, can people still reside in this home? What's, what's the damage to the domicile? So there's definitely much more damage in that area, even though unlike a hurricane, a tornado is kind of an acute problem. Damage was contained between Bel Air and 995 along that, along that neighborhood, and it was very similar to where we suffered a tornado damage, I think about seven years ago, seven or eight years ago. After, very quickly, once we realized that we were so lucky to have no injuries in this area, I mean, multiple residents had near misses, we had report of a roof truss through a roof where residents who were sleeping looked up, and there it was coming out of their ceiling. We had roof trusses like thrown into the ground like lawn darts, almost, kind of unbelievable. And, and a multi-generational family that was living in a home where the roof was totally torn off and partially collapsed in that structure, and again, no injuries, just kind of a miracle for us. Quickly, we did start to have our Public Works Crew help us to make sure school traffic wasn't interrupted. We did have some minor issues with school busing that morning, but we, the school's right there. School traffic wasn't interrupted, kids went to school. Everything about our community continued for the folks that weren't impacted, and a funny thing about a tornado is one day, one neighbor on your street can be, you know, really dealing with something significant from a, from a property standpoint, while another literally wakes up, walks out and says, "Hey, what's going on here? Why is everybody out here on the same street?" So very different and interesting day for us, we've had quite a year, but we're really grateful that our residents were safe and that we continue to be preparing for the next thing. People who were part of our response were the Sheriff's Office, the Utility Department, the Public Works Department, Community Development Department, Flagler County Fire Rescue was a part of our response, and Flagler County EM, all assembled within, we were all in a closet at the neutral sports complex until we, we found a better place, you know, within 30 minutes of, of the event. And so it was a great response, and you know, your Palm Coast Fire Department and our community partners continue to try to do everything we can to protect our citizens.
Thank you, Chief. Just one more time, how many people were injured?
Zero.
Wow.
Yes, sir.
That's what I told the, told Senator Scott yesterday, he was very impressed, so good job.
Excellent. We also had a representative from Senator Rubio's office reach out, and she toured the area and talked to some folks, so we've heard from both our senators, which is pretty great for us. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
I have a second, we are adjourned.